Good evening and welcome to the August 7, 2025, meeting of the Town of Southampton Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held live and also via video conferencing in accordance with the Town Board's enactment of Local Law Number 14 of 2022. Our next meeting and those following also will be held here in person at Town Hall and will continue to allow for remote participation. So please keep checking the town's website for updates and any new information. If you wish to view tonight's live meeting only and not participate, please do not join the Zoom meeting and instead go to the town's website for viewing access. With that, I'd ask you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. For which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you with us here tonight, in case of an emergency evacuation, please exit through the rear doors of this room to one of the staircases across the hall and continue downstairs and out through the main entrance. Do not attempt to use the elevators during an emergency evacuation. In case of a medical emergency, the automated external defibrillator and first aid kit are both located in the hallway on this floor opposite the elevator. Restrooms are located across the hall from this room. We'll begin this meeting with public hearings. We have applicants and members of the public here with us live and also standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being monitored by CTV. CTV will mute the speakers on Zoom until it's their time to give testimony before the board. Please be patient. If you find you're having difficulties accessing the hearing, visit the Town Clerk's Meeting Portal and click on the instructions link. Also, for those of you in the boardroom, please silence your cell phones and refrain from speaking to one another as it interferes with the recording of our proceedings. Tonight, Board Member Helen Burgess is participating via Zoom. A reminder, oh, and also Rob Macedonio is absent. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will take their address for the record and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the board. In order to consider properly every application before us tonight, individuals commenting on a particular application will have a time limit of three minutes. Also, before handing in any submissions to the board tonight, please make sure documents identify the ZBA application name and tax map number. Application names should also be written on your certified receipts. Unless otherwise stated, at the end of an individual application hearing, all applications remain open for written comments for all purposes until a set date. Those written comments can be addressed to members of the board and sent via email, mail, and or dropped off at Town Hall to the Board Secretary Candace Cowan, the Building Department. At this time, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of our July 17 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Revan?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. John, would you take us through the agenda, please?
Starting with number nine on the agenda, application of Matthew and Yasemin Salas, 588 Hay Ground Watermill, 588 Hay Ground Road Watermill Suffolk County Tax Map Number This application will be re-advertised for our September 4 meeting. Number 11 on the agenda, 2297 Montauk LLC, 2297 Montauk Bridge Hampton Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-86-1-3. This, I move to adjourn this, the hearing on this application to October 16.
Second. Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Revan?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Number 12 on the agenda, the application of 625 Butter Lane Homestead LLC Agricultural Reserve Bridge Hampton Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-51-1-17.7. I move to adjourn the hearing on this application to November 6.
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Revan?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Number 13 on the agenda, the application of Gary and Barbara Siegler, 271 Dune Road Bridge Hampton Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-179-2-26.2. I move to adjourn this, the hearing on this application to October 2.
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Revan?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Number 14 on the agenda, application of John T. Montalvo et al., 1129 1089 and 1169 Spianca Riverhead Road Remsenberg Spianca Suffolk County Tax Map Numbers 900-301-2-67 and 8. I move to adjourn the hearing on this application to October 2.
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Revan?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Number 16 on the agenda, application of Wilderness Trail JV LLC Landlocked Property on North Sea Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-79-1-33. I move to adjourn the hearing on this application to September 18.
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Yep.
Mr. Revan?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Number 19 on the agenda, secret resolution and the application of 2297 Montauk LLC, 2297 Montauk Highway Bridge Hampton Suffolk County Tax Map 900-86-1-3. I move to adjourn the hearing on this application to October 16.
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Revan?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Chair votes aye.
Turning to the decision calendar, the decision of South Dune Builders Four Cricket Path Remsenberg Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-380-1-27. I move to adjourn the decision of this application to August 21.
Second.
Ms. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Revan?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Chair votes aye.
Decision in the application of John and Meredith Noonan, 284 East Montauk Highway, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-230-1-15. I move to adjourn the decision on this application to August 21.
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Revan?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Finally, the decision of Dana R. Rubin and Robert J. Gottlieb, 60 Noyac Harbor Road, Noyac Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-4-1-73. I move to adjourn the decision in this application to August 21.
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Revan?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, turning to...
Back to number one.
Agenda item number one, application of Eric and Marlo Bamberger, 59 Bayview Drive East Noyac Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-9-3-63.2. Applicant requests relief from Town Code Section 330-6 General Regulations that references Section 330-11 Residence Districts Table of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory front lot line setback of 30.3 feet from the southerly property line Bayview Drive where 40 feet is required for a proposed pool with spa and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction. This is a minor application, so there is no public hearing. Normally, we close these and we do decision later on for tonight, but we are waiting on referrals on this from the trustees, Suffolk County Planning Commission, and the Conservation Board. So I'd ask the board to, you know, close the application, keep it written, keep it open for written submissions until the next meeting.
Okay, so we should have written submissions as of...
Yeah, you can use the same deadlines we used before.
8/22 with the decision on 9/4?
Yep.
Okay, um, all right.
When the decision 9/4, this is 8/21.
Say it again?
When the decision 9/4, this is 8/21.
I thought you were saying written subs.
Okay, two, um, no.
Oh, yeah.
Because it was a minor, that's why I asked.
Yeah, no.
Except you're still waiting for referrals, so we should probably give ourselves some time.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, well, how we've been waiting for the referrals.
Okay, since Robert's not here, will somebody make that motion, please?
I move to, uh, close the public hearing on the Bamberger application, hold it open for written submissions to August 22 and the decision September 4.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Revan?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Number two on the agenda, application of Matthew Walsh, 150 Noyac Path Watermill Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-81-1-3.9. Applicant requests a determination that the subject parcel Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-81-1-3.9 is held in single and separate ownership from all adjacent parcels and thus entitled to relieve pursuant to Section 330-115D.
The board has jurisdiction.
Number three on the agenda, application of Matthew Walsh, 126 Noyac Path Watermill Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-81-1-4.3. Applicant requests a determination that the subject parcel Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-81-1-4.3 is held in single and separate ownership from all adjacent parcels and thus entitled to relieve pursuant to Section 330-115D.
Board has jurisdiction.
Number four on the agenda, application of Matthew Walsh, 120 Noyac Path Watermill Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-81-1-4.4. Applicant requests a determination that the subject parcel Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-81-1-4.4 is held in single and separate ownership from all adjacent parcels and thus entitled to relieve pursuant to Section 330-115D.
The board has jurisdiction.
Number five on the agenda, application of Matthew Walsh, 170 Noyac Path Watermill Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-81-1-4.5. Applicant requests a determination that the subject parcel Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-81-1-4.5 is held in single and separate ownership from all adjacent parcels and thus entitled to relieve pursuant to Section 330-115D.
The board has jurisdiction.
You sure? Okay, sorry.
So we're going to open all of these together and take testimony at once.
Okay.
Carl Benacasa, 860 Montauk Highway Watermill, New York. For the applicants, good evening, everyone. So we are considering single and separate applications for four related lots. And what I've passed around is sort of a color-coded timeline so that you can see how these lots evolved over time and how they end up in common ownership. I also passed around the 1984 and 1994 tax maps. And I do have all relevant tax bills here. I don't know if you want all these. I could just submit them for the record, but...
It'd be nice to just at least know. Because that was one of my questions, was about the tax. So you can testify to it, Carl. We'll trust your testimony.
Will we?
Yes, we will. Yes, we will.
Unless, John, you would like to take personal responsibility for reviewing them.
We'll take judicial notice.
Okay.
One of those notes.
Exactly. Started already.
Yes, so...
Okay, good evening. So we're talking about the history of these parcels as they were owned by Walter Kasich and David Walsh. And in 1975, on your first sheet, you'll see that they were, the southern two parcels were one parcel owned by Walter Kasich, and the northern parcel was one parcel owned by Walter and David. You flip to 1977, without the benefit of planning board intervention, just by deed, which could be done back then, the northern parcel was subdivided into three lots, all conforming to zoning at the time. All at that time in David, David and Walter's name, while the southern lot remained just in Walter's name. Return in 1978, that's the next one, you'll see that the yellow parcel, that's the northernmost, was actually sold to a third party. The two remained, northern parcels remaining were both in Walter's name and David's name, and the southern remained in Walter's name. So now, the two green parcels are conforming lots, and the southern parcel is not in common ownership.
And the, the yellow conforming?
The yellow was conforming, but that was sold off.
I know.
But this was under the treaty for zoning.
Right.
Which was R40. In March of 1984, still conforming, just a few weeks before the upzone, you'll see that the lots, Walter, at this point, had transferred ownership, positive of this upzoning, looking to get out of common ownership. It went from David and Walter in green to Walter in the orange, and then the southern lot has always remained in Walter's. And April 4 of 1984, that's when that upzoning happened. Again, at this point, the northern lots are non-conforming, but they're all in separate ownership, single, single and separate ownership. Turning to the next page, in 1988, the southern lots, by virtue of a variance granted by the zoning board for lot size for that 120 lot, was subdivided, and that created, so now we have the four lots we're dealing with today. The two northern lots, the one in green and the one in orange, and the two southern lots, by virtue of that subdivision, all in Walter's names. So now you have, by virtue of variance, two non-conforming lots, or actually, one non-conforming lot, 120 is, 126 is conforming. 120 is not conforming, in common ownership, however, by virtue of a variance for lot size. Going to 1994, the northern lot that had been Walter's is now given to David. So David and Walter own the green, David owns the blue, and Walter still owns both in red. So despite the 88 variance and subdivision approval, which was filed in 1991, the names were never taken out of common ownership to the south. You have a non-conforming, unimproved lot that is lot number 120, which is this lot, in common ownership with the money, so. In 2013, Walter passes away, and at that point, by virtue of Walter's estate, all go to David. And it is from that point forward that these lots were in common ownership. Now, the 1984 tax map, which you have, shows something, it reflects what I've just told you. The lots we're looking at are actually right up here. This parcel here and these right here are the northern lots. Tilt this way? I'm sorry. So if you look at the 1984... Okay, got it. You'll, if you look at that, the lot that's sort of L-shaped to the north is a bunch of different small parcels. Yep. Which was a result of the fact that they didn't have town involvement in the subdivision, they just did it by deed, so it was a little bit sloppy. But it reflects that those are distinct parcels from the south and distinct from each other. When they did the subdivision that we mentioned with the zoning board's involvement in 1989, the county at that point worked with the town, Real Property Services, and the assessors to clean up that jumbled mess of small lots. And if you see the 1994 Suffolk County Tax Map, those lots now reflect what it looks like today. They are all independent tax parcels. Candace has those.
They have one.
You have them already. So these packets, you know, there's four different lots spanning 50 years, but you can see that since they became non, all in common ownership, that was in 2013, we have independent tax map numbers and tax bills for each lot. Going back to 150, I'm sorry, 126 and 120, which became, by virtue of a variance, again, approved in 88, filed in 91, we have tax maps going back virtually to that same period showing that they have all had independent tax numbers since that time. It's clear throughout the history of these parcels, all of which are completely vacant and unimproved except for 126. None of them have been used, in reality, in conjunction with each other. All of them have had separate tax map numbers, as they reflected independent on the tax maps, and the actions of the owners throughout time have demonstrated an intent to keep these separate by virtue of variances, by virtue of changing ownership when appropriate. Walter, David has since died in 19, in 2024, the executor is now handling these, and it came up that despite their dexterity with respect to ownership and trying to keep these separate all along, as they got older in age and with Walter's death, that sort of, their attention to detail with respect to keeping them separate went by the wayside. No fault, you know, of probably just the lack of appreciating Walter's death.
What do they do?
What does that mean?
Yeah, what do they do?
What were the actions that caused you to say that?
Over time?
No, since then, they got older and they were less attentive to detail.
That's, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Well, but they had tax bills, were they paid separately?
They were all paid separately, yes. But as far as keeping the names distinct as they had been doing all along, getting variances they had done in the 90s, that didn't happen.
Okay.
And now, they're both passed away, and the executor is sort of working on officially, officially having these declared single and separate, and that's why I'm here today.
And any mortgage information that we ought to know about?
No, no mortgage.
I actually went to look at the properties, and you're absolutely right, completely undeveloped, except for a driveway, like a dirt driveway that goes up to...
To the one improved lot.
Right, the one improved lot, yes. Okay.
Thank you for...
Yeah, that's...
So I only have, like, sort of, just one curiosity. How is it that it took 12 years to figure out that the lots have merged? I mean, how long, how long has the estate been? I'm just a little puzzled by that. Walter's, when, when... Oh, I'm sorry, somebody died in 2024. Someone died in 2013, then 2024, and now the estate's, I guess. So this just, this just came to... Understood, okay.
Julie, do you have any particular questions?
I mean, no, I think you've taken us through the elements of...
Carl, I have to say, I appreciate very much this because it really was, I was trying to track it, and it was very difficult.
It would have been much worse, so thank you.
It really, so we usually use...
I did this for myself, too.
Yeah, well, I really, you did a good job. You know, no mortgage, separate tax bills, no cross uses. To me, it looks pretty cut and dry in terms of separate and, single and separate. Anybody else have a question? Is there anyone?
Well presented.
Anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on these four applications for 150 Noyac Path et al.? Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to be heard?
No one on Zoom.
Julie, this is yours.
Okay, so it sounds like we're going to close this. I move to close the public hearing. It could open until August 22 for written submissions with a decision September 4.
Second.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Revan?
Aye.
Ms. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair.
Number six on the agenda, OAF New Horizon Homes Incorporated, 10 Sagamore Road, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 900-230-1-19. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for proposed pool. One, Section 330-30 General Regulations that references 330-34 Business Districts Table of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory front lot line setback from 60 feet to 20 feet, and an accessory rear yard setback from 50 feet to 43 feet. And two, Section 330-76D Placement of Accessory Building Structures and Uses in All Districts, and Section 330-83C Yards to allow the pool to be located within the required front and side yards for the principal building on a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Are you an attorney?
No, ma'am.
Okay, okay, so let me swear. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name and address.
Alan Fohardo, address 391 Mayflower Avenue, Brentwood, New York, 11717.
Did you say Alan?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, tell us about this application, Alan.
So yes, ma'am, I purchased a property last year. I've been working on the property and I'll do some improvement to it, and we want to do recreational. Okay, with the setback, this is, I believe this, they require 50 feet setback, since though, that's... That way far back out, kind of 50 feet.
Where is the septic field?
Back. Look in the house from the right inside.
Okay, Kevin, I know, do you want to talk about this?
Yeah, so help me clarify a few things. So you acquired the property roughly a year ago?
Yes, sir. A year, well, year and a half ago.
And I've easily decided, and I could see that work has gone on, and did, did the prior owner, or did you put the septic system in the present location?
No, the prior owner, sir.
The prior?
Yes, the prior owner had it.
Okay. And historically, I mean, I think I'm speaking for the board, and anybody feels otherwise can let me know, really don't like pools in a front yard. And it's a pretty small lot for a pool the size I think you're proposing, and it's in the front yard. And it presents a series of issues such as, you know, general presentation in the neighborhood, the property immediately to the east has a pool, it's close to the property line, I think that's less the issue that I have, but your expectations for the size of the pool, you think fit, that can fit there, may be different than other people on the board, myself in particular, and others may feel the same way. And, you know, I really had a hard time imagining why anybody would put a septic system in the backyard, which would limit your opportunities for how you would use the back of the yard and not put it in the front, but if you didn't put it there, I understand that, okay? But you did buy the property knowing that that's where it was.
Correct.
Right. So, I, I mean, I think the pool's too big, I think the encroachment into the front is excessive and incomp, I, you know, I know the area, my kids used to hang out with somebody that was around there when they were in school, and, you know, I get it, it's a working-class community, pretty modest-sized lots, but most of the front of the houses, the front yards for most of this community is pretty even, and we, there's no real encroachment since of the front like this pool would, and I'm concerned that that would have, you know, a precedential impact that I don't think we would want to see continued. So if anybody has any other thoughts...
I did, I went to the property. I thought the backyard was quite narrow, actually, and so I wasn't so sure you'd be able to put a pool back there anyhow. In my opinion, the pool is too big. It even comes further forward to the property line than the house, the, when you line it up, and it's, and it just, it really is such an open area right now, there's no vegetation, so it's like, whoa, that would be like right there. I have a real problem with the setback in the front, not in the side. The, the pool, the pool next door seems to be pushed back further. They probably don't have the same issues that you have in terms of septic or whatever, but it seems to be pushed back further. I drove around the property, I'm not as familiar as Kevin is with it, I didn't see, except for the house next door, another pool. And, and I agree with Kevin in terms of, you know, the, the front yards of these other places. I would be really, in my opinion, the pool is way too big for, I mean, it's almost as big as the house. So that's a problem for me, and I would really like to see as far back as it could go. I don't know in terms of the septic fields how far back it could go, but smaller, back further, and clearly, there would have to be a lot of, you know, vegetation, because it's just like right there.
So you have a hydro action in there right now, right? With drain fields or leaching fields? What do you have?
Leaching.
Okay. I mean, I don't know how easy it is, and I don't say lightly, but, you know, if you shrunk the pool and asked the health department if you could move it back further, then, you know, you might be able to get some pool there, but I, I think you, subtle message, it's not subtle, the message you should be hearing is reduce your expectations for what you think you can fit there.
Understand that, I mean, if you would see the property, what it looked before, so I, I think we would have a better idea.
It's a lovely piece of property, you did a great job.
What it looked before, you know, it was, uh,
That's not a question.
What has been done of the property is way beyond, so, I mean, you know, I can work with.
We're, we're not being critical of both, any of the work you did, we're, we're just talking about the pool.
Understand.
Sometimes small lots don't accommodate pools or, you know, particularly since you've got some issues with where the septic is and everything else. I'm, I, I, you did a lovely job, the house looks beautiful, the garage is nice, the backyard, what, what limited backyard you have is very nice. That's not, that's not the issue.
And I don't say this lightly either because I don't know if you have a finished basement or, or an unfinished basement. But it's, if the septic system was in the front and you could, and the, the, you know, the, the waistline in the house was available and open and you could reroute it. And I, again, I don't say lightly, but that would pre up a lot of room for you to move the pool back.
Yeah, so.
And I know it doesn't fit i- it, in a different orientation, but it would, it would give you a lot of front yard relief. And again, I don't say lightly because it's not a small undertaking.
Yeah, so the, the issue is with the, it also with the setback with, uh, water health.
I understand, no, no.
And that's, that's why we, you know, we come into what we probably are allowing ourselves to what we can actually build as far as the pool. Based on, uh, um, the water health, giving us, you know, I, I couldn't move it to the front, I had to keep it what it is. And I'm working with those, uh, in that, actually work with, uh, with the condition that the water health's actually putting in as well as far as moving the septic tank or, or actually moving to the new septic tanks now. So the I-8 system now, so that's what I'm actually building also on.
What you're describing is the challenge on the property because it's only 10,000 square feet, so.
But we, you know, looking at the property on the side, so I mean, we, we gave them, you guys gave them, you know, built the house and we ran next to the, to the adjacent property lot. So we, they actually closed it to the property line, I'm actually putting a pool, not a house. They extended the house to the right inside, close to, you know, close to the property line. You know, and that's house, it's built like another house.
The criticism is on the side, the criticism, the, the challenge is front to back, right?
Give the challenge on the pool, not the. They built another second pool to the side.
Well, we're talking about, we're talking about, we're talking about your property and your proposal.
We're not dealing with.
I was basing myself on what we have next to it, so, you know, so that's the only property that can bounce it back up.
And that's the only property that has a pool in the area.
Are you living in this property?
Yes, I'll be living in the property, sir.
Anybody else have a comment about, anybody else go to see it?
I didn't see it, I am concerned about the size of the pool.
The size and, and the location. Now, again, not the side yard setback, that's not a problem, but it's the front yard.
Yeah, and we've, we've consistently had an issue with putting pools in the front yard. It's unseemly. So.
It's a little moving forward to the front, some of the side, when you guys in front, it's like, ah, some of the side.
It's the front.
It's encroaching to the front, I understand what you're saying.
Encroaching into the front.
Make the pool a little smaller, set it back a little bit, you might be able to cut some feet off, maybe five feet off the pool, maybe a little narrower, you won't even see it as much, and set it back a little bit.
Yeah.
You probably can if you.
I think, you know, you're hearing the comments.
I gotta see what the water health.
All right, well, you see, you're hearing what the comments are from our board.
Well, even, even, I, I get, it's not my expertise, but if, if one of the leaching fields, one of the leaching rings could be moved, that, what, that, you know, they, they may give you a little relief there, it's something to talk about. But you understand, I mean, I understand your physics problem here, right? There's only so much space and you have to fit a couple of things. And the question is, one is already there and that means the whole conversation is about the size of the pool until you can move anything, so.
And we can go back to the drawing table, see what we can.
We know this isn't the message you want to hear, but.
I know, but, but.
That we already have, and it's just kind of, uh.
Let me just say that the house itself looks really great. So that's, uh, that's a real plus, I mean, it really, it upgrades the neighborhood. But we can't, you know, we really have a problem with the pool. Okay, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on 10 Sagamore Road? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on 10 Sagamore Road?
What is it?
Yes, go ahead, Ellen.
I can concur with the board that I have a problem also with this pool. The size of the pool and the placement of the pool. And it's unfortunate that the septic was put in the back because that's where the pool should have gone. But I guess we're not going to ask him to move the septic. But he certainly should do something. Excuse me, about the size of the pool.
Yeah, let's see what you can come back with and we will take a look at that.
Thank you.
How much, how much time do you think you need? Well, uh, I don't, we're going to leave the hearing open and we want to, we want to.
We want to adjourn this to a subsequent day.
Like to adjourn it to another time for you to come back, but if, if you need a little time or, what's the soonest you could be ready?
When's the next four?
August 21st.
So September then, what's the next?
September, we've got.
We have September 4th and we have.
Too many cases on the calendar, so then it's October 2nd.
August 21st, and when would I need to have the drawings back?
Well, I think you'd be tight for August 21st.
October 2nd seems more reasonable.
October 2nd?
Or.
August 21st, when, when is your deadline for me to turn it, because I mean.
You have to talk, we have to have it at least a week in advance of August 21st, so that would be like next week.
Okay. So if I can, um.
All right, well.
The plan is already drawn, so you just gotta.
All right, do you want to adjourn it and if you can't meet that, we'll adjourn it for another day.
Sounds good.
All right, so let's adjourn this meeting to, until, uh, August 21st.
Second.
The motion.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Repen?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess? Chair outside, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Seven on the agenda, the application of RJS Real Properties LLC. 93 East Montauk Highway, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-263-1-32.4. Pursuant to the New York State Town Law Section 267A and the Southampton Town Code, applicant appeals the March 6, 2025 determination by the Chief Building Inspector that the use of St. Rosalie's, uh, Roman Catholic Church constitutes a school ground pursuant to Town Code Section 330-162.26.
Uh, the board has jurisdiction. Before you start your presentation, I don't know if Steve Kylie spoke to you. Could I, I, I did call Steve Kylie, I just wanted to let the board know. I did call the applicant, one of the applicant's attorneys, Steve Kylie, because it had been brought to my attention about the change of zone and I just kind of wanted to talk to him a little bit about it. So I just wanted to make sure he communicated to you that, I know you want to make your presentation and that's what Steve had said, but I did want to ask either Steve or you guys to maybe put together a written sub just on, um, the board's jurisdiction in light of the change of zone in terms of like standing to, to challenge the interpretation. So I'm just putting that out there. I know, I know you have your presentation for tonight, but I, that's something that I'm going to ask you to, you or Steve.
Do some, clarify that for me, whether we have jurisdiction to hear this?
Yes, because.
Because, but this is a.
And again, I, he, he will address it.
But this is a building inspector decision, which we normally, if it's being appealed, we hear that decision. Why would it be an issue?
Well, the question that had been, that, that I was having is, and again, I'm sorry to hijack your presentation.
Yeah, I think maybe, maybe we should set, set the table a little bit.
Okay, let him go first.
I would just say in response, uh, that, um, be happy to, and we appreciate the opportunity to make a written submission.
They're going to make their, they're going to make their presentation either way, but then after you're finished, I'll, I'll, or maybe I'll just ask him while he's going through it.
Okay, before you start, please state, you, you're an attorney, correct?
Yes, I am.
Please state your name and address.
Timothy Hill, Perillo Hill, 285 West Main Street, Sable, New York. Of counsel to Steve Kylie, who's counsel for the applicant.
All right, Mr. Hill, go ahead.
Good evening, uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. This is, as was recited in the, the notice, um, an appeal for which your jurisdiction exists under Town Law Section 267A from a. 267A talks about both an appeal from an interpretation of the building inspector as well as a, an appeal from a determination of the building inspector. And this is an appeal in both of those regards and I'll address them one at a time. But just to circle back to the procedural issue, if there's a request or an opportunity for a written submission, I would welcome that and maybe I would tailor my comments and keep things tidy if, if there's going to be the opportunity for a, a written submission as well.
Oh, there definitely will be because I, I do want to end, end the record.
So, um, that, that the, the action of the, uh, building inspector in question is, is a letter March 6, 2025 from the building inspector, addressed to the chairperson of the town's planning board. Just by way of a, a little context to how we got to this point, this is, uh, an application for a, um, non-medical cannabis dispensary. This is a field that is fully, um, occupied by state law. And the applicant has done everything on the state level, um, to get their certification and licensing in place to proceed. Their application to the, um, planning board was for a special exception use to have permission to operate in the location that they desire. That application was made, um, and sometime before the public hearing on that, it got a little bit sidetracked or tabled in terms of a request that was made to the building inspector. The, I, I attempted to find if that was articulated at a meeting or the request by the planning board to the, the building inspector to know exactly what the assignment was, so to speak. But, um, I mean, we can glean it from, from the March 6th letter. Effectively, um, this was an application and the question before the planning board was under the very specific, uh, requirements of the Town Code for exactly this type of facility, all of which is in section 330-162.26 of the Town Code. And even more specifically in subsection C of that provision, which provides a dimensional, uh, requirement in terms of a distance from a house of worship. And that was the request that was made to, um, the, the building inspector to confirm the distance involved and whether or not it complied with the 200-foot restriction in subsection C. Again, this is really actually a field that's fully controlled by the state law. So whether any of these dimensional regulations are, um, you know, something that the town can, um, enforce is, is a separate question that may get addressed elsewhere. But just by context, even staying within the town's own rules, these, this was the, what was before the, the town board. So if, if we look at that, uh, March 6th letter from the building inspector, it refers to having been asked by the planning board to make a determination pertaining to the special exception application at the above address. And says the initial request cites, uh, section 330-162.26C. And again, that is the provision that provides that it must be 200 feet from a house of worship. Fully outside of the request, the determination pivots to say, actually upon further reflection and because I happened to speak to, um, the pastor at the church, obviously this location that we're measuring from is, is St. Rosalie's Church, to determine if it was 200 feet from there. It pivoted away from that and said, uh, building inspector said, well, actually, I think the better thing to do is to consider this a school and, and apply the standard for school, which is 500 feet. And I'll come back to that when I talk about the appeal from the determination. But in terms of the appeal from the interpretation, um, the interpretation that St. Rosalie's Church is a school and not a church, um, is, is what we take issue with in the first part of this appeal. And so, as we always do in, um, matters of statutory interpretation, we look at what the code itself says. So in section 330-5, the Town Code, school is a defined term. The school includes buildings, this is 330-5. Schools defined as building structures, premises, or places together with the grounds thereof, which are used primarily for public or private educational facilities. So the key term there is primarily. So on a compound that might include, uh, a church, another structure, um, something used for other purposes, the question is, what is the primary or predominant use? And I don't think there's any question that's St. Rosalie's Church. The, the parcel that that property is dedicated to, um, if you had to ask what its primary use was, is as a church or a house of worship. In fact, um, the, we obtained a copy of the CO for the property and it has a one-word entry that says church. There's no reference to a school, school building, anything of the like in the certificate of occupancy for this parcel. So as a matter of the Town Code's own definition, um, there's simply no basis to sustain the interpretation that St. Rosalie's Church is a, is a school. You can also look at the section of the code that provides this dimensional relief or requirement. And again, pivoting away from what the actual question was, which was under subsection C for a house of worship, even under the definition in subsection A, um, where the distance is described in terms of its location to school grounds. It's a definition that is what in elementary school we used to get in trouble for, for using the word to define itself. But it defines school grounds as any building, structure, surrounding outdoor grounds, including entrances, exits contained within a public or private preschool, nursery school, elementary school, or secondary schools legally defined property boundaries pursuant to section 409, subsection 2 of the New York State Education Law. So I'll, I'll get to that reference to the education law definition in a second. It's immensely disappointing in terms of what it provides. But this definition in the Town Code itself of these school grounds is talking about a legally defined property boundary. So, um, if we're talking about St. Rosalie's Church, St. Rosalie's Church, as the CO reflects, is the owner and occupant of that, that parcel. There may be other buildings and structures on it, um, but the legally defined property boundaries have to be in reference to the owner of that, that parcel. So everything that precedes the description in that definition assumes that that's the, that's the legal boundary of a school. But there is no school. There is no, um, school that is the primary occupant of, of this address. So under the basic definition of school in the Town Code, as well as the specific definition of school grounds in the, the applicable section of the Town Code, there's really just not a tenable, um, defense for the definition that the, the building inspector came up with.
Wait, can you just back up for a second, though? Because the building inspector's letter does talk about a building in the rear portion. So you said there may or may not be a building, I mean, there is a building in the rear, right?
It's referred to as parish hall.
So is, is, is it your position that doesn't count as like the school, the grounds?
Yes, because the, the school building, a building doesn't have a legal, uh, boundary. Parcels have legal boundaries. So, um, the, whether there's a school, and we don't really agree necessarily that there is a,
Right, right.
even a dedicated school building on the, the grounds. Whether there's a building that's used as a school, um, among the things that are on the church's lot, there has to be something that is part of, uh, within the schools, school apostrophe S, legally defined property boundaries. So the school has to be the thing that owns the property. It has to be possessed, there has to be ownership by a school of the bounds to make any building on it subject to this, this requirement.
What case law do you have that shows that interpretation?
It's, it's
I mean, you're reading a statute and telling us it has to say, it has to mean what you are saying it means, but that's not necessarily true. As we all know, statutes are subject to statutory interpretation by the courts of law. And the question becomes, have you looked to see what case law there is in the state of New York, which has, uh, interpreted this very thing?
And another thing that I, I'll mention is that your, you know, your use of the school definition in the Town Code leaves out the fact that it says that, uh, the buildings, it includes buildings which are primarily for public or private educational facilities as recognized and defined by the New York State Department of Education. So I think that you need to do a much deeper dive. I mean, I have to say, look, this was, this case was assigned to me and I'm very disappointed by this application. It was a one-page application, a letter that simply said, we're appealing the building department's determination that this is school grounds. And that's all we got. We got nothing, no briefing. This is a huge case. This is not something that we just, one little letter. I mean, honestly, the letter that we received was paltering comparison to what actually needs to be done. The number of questions there are, it, it asked, it, it presented more questions than it answered. So to, to speak about your, uh, my first question is, what is the definition of a school? Well, the definition of a school fortunately is something that the Town Code provides, in which I. Right, but it also goes further into. Comments, because I, I didn't expect this to be adversarial, right? I mean, we're making this appeal to you, I understand you have a critique of the, uh, thickness.
It's not adversarial, it's simply that your application does not have any of the information one would expect to see from an application of this kind. That's not adversarial, that's a fact.
Well, you asked me a question that I haven't had the opportunity to answer yet and, um, respectfully, your, your question interrupted my presentation, which is hopefully supplementing the, you know.
Why don't you answer the question? Why don't you answer the question then and not critique what I'm asking you?
I'm not critiquing, I'm just trying to...
Go ahead, just answer the question.
So the question that you started with was, is there case law that supports this definition? There's not case law because what we're interpreting is the town code provision on this dispensary, which is a very recent vintage. So this hasn't, nobody's taken a case, there's not been any litigation over Southampton Town Code's cannabis statute. So there would only be case law if there was a lawsuit that was asked to interpret it.
You have to think much further out of the box. There may be case law with regard to how one defines a school in a municipality.
But also remember, the, the board sits in the, the place of the chief building inspector, right? So, so everything in front of us and everything that they're telling us is, is for you to decide whether or not the church is, is acting as a school, or however you want to phrase it. But it's, we are sitting in the, you are sitting in the position of the chief building inspector. So we, you know, I mean, we can ask for case law, but it's also, we do have to look at what the town code says as guidance for the interpretation.
Oh, certainly, but I think also, I mean, look, the, the fact of the matter is, is that this, these town code provisions are also intertwined with education law, with, with administrative agencies like the Office of Cannabis Management, the Department of Education. We can't just say, oh, we only are going to look at the town code and that's it. I mean, there's, there are so many other factors here.
But if I could, John, Mr. Hill, I, I do want to give you an opportunity to finish your presentation. You're making great points. Let's hold and see what he finishes up with, okay?
Thank you. So with respect to legal authority for this position, statutory interpretation or statutory construction of, whether it's of a statute or language in a contract, the, the first question is, is the language itself ambiguous? Does it require interpretation? So unambiguous language in a contract or a statute doesn't get treatment by the court interpreting it if what its plain language says means what it means. That's, and I can give you, you know, a million cases that would support that, what are called the canons of statutory instruction. And I would submit that the definition of a school in the town code, which talks about it being used primarily for public or private educational facilities, is unambiguous. We, we know what primarily means, and in the context of this parcel...
So you drive, you drive into the parking lot at the church, and you're hanging right toward what is referred to as parish hall. And there's a big blue sign that says, OLH Nursery School, or pre-K, or whatever it says. So it's like, okay, that's, that's pretty clear. And my oldest son is 34 years old, and I took both my kids after they went to public school to religious education after elementary school. So that's been going on for 25 years. Ask anybody locally knows that, right? So, so, you know, whatever is referred to as the primary use of the parish hall facility that has classrooms in it is, is, you know, something that to John's point, you know, would have been nice to have some, you know, some briefing on how are these interpretations made? How are the, what are the classifications of these uses? And are they consistent or inconsistent with the definitions you're reminding us of? And I'm, I'm not looking to be adversarial, but these are important issues that we have to resolve. And, you know, common knowledge and, and what we know from our own experiences, you know, affect how we're processing your information. So I think we need a little bit more, whether it's here or, or the hearing open, and then your, your briefs on this, I, I think have a lot of questions that have to still be answered.
If I may, I'm sorry, but I think that your, your definition, you are reading only to a certain point and then stopping. There is a comma and there is more to the statement, to the definition of a school. And you are leaving out, as recognized and defined by the New York State Department of Education. The, the definition of school grounds in the town code lifts the exact same language from education law 409 sub 2. So, so you cannot say that there's not going to be any case law, there's not going to be any legal precedent, and that we are limited to looking at the town code. And, oh, it's, it says a school is used primarily for public or private educational facilities, forget all the rest. Look, a, a statute needs to be read in its entirety and its entire context. And so there's more to the story here that we don't have. And I think that it behooves your client for you to go back, and in your briefing, I'm going to give you a whole list of stuff I want to hear about. And one is, what is the definition of a school according to the education law and according to the Department of Education?
Sir...
No, hold on a minute, I'm not done. And then I want you to tell me, look at the, look at school grounds. Does that mean that it's primarily, that the property is primarily used for a preschool, a kindergarten, elementary, or high school? Or is it not? And those things can be found, there are, I am sure these issues have been extensively discussed, especially in the context of schools attached to religious organizations because of tax purposes.
Mr. Hill, I do want to comment. I, I think what you're hearing from some who have spoken is that regardless of what anybody thinks of cannabis dispensaries or cannabis usage, we're going to have some pretty serious scrutiny around the issue when you're talking about a dispensary in proximity to either a church or a school. It's just a serious issue. We're not talking about a swimming pool near a front yard, which itself is serious to that property owner, but this is at a different level. So you should expect the scrutiny.
I remember the issue before the board is whether the church is also functioning as a school, not whether the cannabis dispensary is in proximity to it. Because there's different setbacks for it.
And can we also clarify, I'm sorry, just last point on this. It's, this church grounds constitute a church and other buildings that serve other functions. So it's, we need to be careful about the terminology used with respect to the building inspector's circle and his measurements, which weren't necessarily from the church. That's not the issue. The issue is the, are buildings that are used for some form of, you know, education or instruction, and whether those terms fit into all the things that John just said, right? So, so it's not about where the church is, and it's not about where the dumpster is. It's about where the portions of the property used for educational purposes, whether pre-K or nursery schools fit into that definition? I don't know, but we need to know. And that's germane to the question you're asking us to rule on. Did the building inspector get it right or wrong?
And I just wanted to add one thing, and then I promise you, you're going to be able to finish your presentation, because I really do want to give you that opportunity. When it comes to property, and you were saying that the church owns this property, if, if there is a high school that's run by a religious organization, it's not run by the, it's not owned by the high school, it's owned by a religious organization. So I mean, I think that, you know...
Yes, but, and not to interrupt you, but a, St. Anthony's High School, right? That, that school is a school. It's, I can promise you that the...
But you know what, you're saying, you're saying a school is somebody, that's something that goes from nine to five, to three, or whatever, it's, you know, schools have different, different, you know, preschool, they recognize preschool in, in the, in the statute. I mean, you know, so private and public preschools are recognized. So there's a lot here that we have to digest, and I'm going to let you have an opportunity to finish up. But I'm, I'm telling you that we're having, we're struggling with some of the interpretations that you're making, and we're going to have to take a look at some of the other aspects of this, you know.
So almost everybody...
He's going to come up with the worst question ever.
Yeah, 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 we're saving it for the end.
Yeah, you know, it's our secret weapon.
And I, I promise you, I have, I have an answer for everybody. Not that I have an answer for anybody, but I, I have, I would like to respond to each of your comments to the extent I haven't forgotten already because they came one after another. But first, to yours, board member, absolutely appreciate the, you know, significance or the weightiness of, of this issue. And I'm not trying to give it short shrift at all. But we are appealing from a building inspector's determination that could also be critiqued for the thinness of its analysis. There is no explanation in that letter as to how any interpretation was made or arrived at. There is just a citation to the statute, which is not even the section of the statute that he was asked to look at. So, you know, yes, this is very important, and we mean to give it the, the close look that it's, that it requires. But in terms of another, one of our lawyerly rules about statutory construction, you look at the statute as a whole, as I believe you said. So that means applying the definition of school as it exists. But it also means within that section itself, that if there is a more specific provision of a statute that applies to the question at hand, you apply the one that more specifically addresses that issue. So this town board legislated, enacted 330-162.26, included in that sections A, B, and C. C specifically addresses the distance that a dispensary can be from a house of worship. So that's, that is, and the question is not, like you're saying, I drove a long way to get here, so I'm, I'm not pretending to know what, you know, happens at the, when, when the school buses roll in or, or anything else. And I'm not trying to deny that, you know, what, what you and your kids or anybody that's gone there have understood to be a school. But that is not the question. There's not a question of whether school activities go on there, or even if there's a building that people treat as a school and which functions as a school. Again, none of that's explained in the, the building inspector's letter either. There's not even a identification of what building it was talking about for the purposes of making any measurements that he made. But the question is not, is there something, is a school there? It's which of these provisions in an area that, to the extent it's not totally preempted, which it very well may be by state law, but to the extent that the town board took the time to write a very specific statute on this exact type of facility, and subdivided into sections based, which give different distances for different uses, where there's a more specific, more specifically applicable section, that's the one that controls. And the, the, there's a, there's a specific section addressed to houses of worship, which again, our position is that the, we're talking about the parcel, right? That is what we're, you know, defines the, the predominant use, is what that parcel is for. The CO says church, it's St. Rosalie's Church, there may be other activities that go on there, there could be bingo, there could be a school, there could be other things. But I don't think there's a legitimate question that the primary use is as a house of worship or a school. And that is what controls. And yes, the, the definition refers to the New York State Education Law, which I have a copy of, right? So does that editorialize that it's, it's disappointing for our purposes because it's the same language? It's, it doesn't, it is basically word for word, 409, subsection 2, which is what it refers to, uses the same terms that are already in the code that say as defined by. So it's just redundant of it. But again, the critical part of both 409-2, as well as what's in the town code, is that it's, it's talking about its relation to the school apostrophe S legally defined property boundaries. And there is no school that we're talking about. There may be places where kids bring their pens and papers and learn things, but there's no school that we're talking about that has any legally defined property boundaries. What has property boundaries is the church.
I'm having a hard time listening to your logic, with all due respect. Because most, if, if the church had a, if, if the church was a cathedral and it had its own high school on it, would you call a high school a church?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I don't even know if I can. If, if, if on the property there was a cathedral, and it also had a high school because it was big enough to be, would you refer to the high school as a church? Or would you call the high school a school? I think I know the answer. You would probably call the high school a school, and the cathedral a cathedral, and a cemetery a cemetery. It's the use that determines its name.
The, the question, the, the term in the code, right, is primarily. So the question for interpretation is not which you would call it, subjectively because one's bigger than the other or something, or you could bring up any hypothetical where it's a tough call. The question is, in this case, and you have the local knowledge, is St. Rosalie's Church, is that parcel, that tax lot, which is not subdivided into separate lots, and the CO of which is a church, is that primarily a church or something else?
See, but hold on, you're trying to ask us to, you're, you're, you're supporting your position by asking us to impose our anecdotal experiences on your application. The, the fact of the matter is this, I'm, I'm listening to you, and you have to understand, as a 25-year litigator, I'm horrified by this. You don't just say, oh, look at the town code and look at the education law, it's exactly the same, so we just throw our hands up, and we can't say what it means. We can say what it means because we know what we see when we look outside our window. That's not how you do it. As a litigator, you look at case law that has interpreted these sections of either New York State legis, hold on, legislative code or the town code. You also look at agency administrative decisions from the Department of Education, which determines what a school is. Or you look at the legislative intent and the legislative history to determine what the legislature meant when they enacted that law. And many, many times, case law will have discussions of legislative history and legislative intent. There's a lot more work you need to do. One of your biggest hurdles in this case, and you have to understand, I'm not coming here, and I want to, and I want to make everybody crystal clear about my position on this case. I ran for town board in this town, and I supported this cannabis dispensary in debates. So the question of whether I think it should be there or shouldn't be there is unquestionable, and it's also irrelevant.
I agree with that.
Thank you. I am sitting here saying to myself, I have an application in front of me, and I want to see you put your best foot forward. And the way you do that is by providing us with briefing, which will show your legal position, not, oh, you know that's what it is, because that's what you're saying to us right now. You're saying you know it's a school, you're not a school, you know it's a church. That doesn't cut it.
That's really, I have to push back...
That is exactly what you're doing, please.
That is a complete...
No, that is exactly what you're doing.
A totally unfair characterization.
It is not.
And I fully disagree with you.
Okay, fine, you could disagree with me all you want, but I sit on this side of the table. Hold on a minute, I sit on this side of the table, and I'm going to tell you what you need to do in order to get yourself over the hurdle. You need to tell us, what is a school? Not what we see and what we should understand, but what is a school? What does the law say a school is? What does the law say school grounds are? Because as you've pointed out, all of these definitions find themselves in state law and were enacted many years ago, and I'm sure were litigated to death, especially in the context, and this is the thing, this is where you have to focus yourself, in the context of a school on religious property. That's, that's the, that is the gravamen of your whole thing.
We've got to, we've got to look at that issue, yes.
Yes, but can I, I mean, this is, this is important to...
All right, I understand. Let's try, let's try not to get confrontational on this, because we're really trying to sort this through on our side and on your side, so...
Okay, but let's, let's, let's understand what the, the boundaries are. Okay, but let's, let's, let's understand what the, the boundaries are here. Because there is no talking about what the legislature and the legislative intent of a statute. This is an interpretation of the town code. The only legislature is the town board that enacted this town code, which was done very recently.
Which borrowed it from state law, which
Town law and the town code
All right.
Look, state law and town law are inextricably linked. You keep telling me how insufficient our presentation is and I can't finish a sentence.
All right, okay. Let's, let's let him finish his sentences and then we can make a list of everything that we need to have you address for the future. Okay.
And maybe the easier thing to do is, is submit a brief. But I don't think that, there shouldn't be a misunderstanding that this requires, you know, delving into areas of how a school has been defined in other cases, in other places. This is about what the words mean in the town code. That's the only thing that the building inspector has the authority.
What Mr. Leonard is saying is the town code is based on state. So there has, so there is, there is a point to delving into a little bit of the definitional stuff. So And if you're not satisfied, you know, then that's, that's going to be a problem for you. So you might want to consider taking a look at that.
I do that and I appreciate the feedback. There's certainly zero legal authority of that nature in the building inspector's letter. This is not like a variance application where we have, as the applicant, a certain burden of proof. This is a fresh question to you. Did, did he get it right or is our position? And for whatever you think of our presentation, you have an equal question before you as to whether the building inspector correctly interpreted this. And there, there is no, you know, explanation at all in, in that letter. There's, it's a bizarre letter. It, it cites to the wrong sections of a code that, I assume it's just a typo, but it's referring to section 462, which is not an actual section. There's a whole two or three paragraphs that are, repeat themselves, like somebody cut and paste something and then put it in again. There's no case law, there's no statutory law, there's no explanation for the interpretation of the town code.
Is it your position that the lack of reasoning for the determination invalidates the determination?
There's a question before you, which is whether that, that interpretation is correct or not. And I would welcome the opportunity to further explain our position. But you're, to the extent that you're going to make this decision, the building inspector's letter gives you nothing in terms of how he got to his. You'll need to do that yourselves. Maybe you'll just agree on its face that that's what you agree with. But it wouldn't be because that's been persuasively presented to you, that that's the correct interpretation.
It's your appeal. So you, you have the burden to present, you know, your case. And that's, and you know, so it's basically
But I just want to clarify. So we're not taking the position that because there is no reasoning in the determination itself as to how the building inspector reached his decision, you're not saying that it's invalid for that reason? You're saying it's invalid because it's wrong, but not because it doesn't leg out its reasoning?
Correct. And the, the, but if, but this board's decision would need to do that. I mean, if, if this board adopted and had a one-sentence, you know, decision that as, in determining this appeal, we adopt and approve as correct the interpretation of the building inspector in his March 6 letter, we would file an Article 78 from that and that would get annulled because that decision would not have any support in it. So there's nothing, you know, if you're not agreeing with us, the work will have to happen on, on your end because the, the building inspector didn't give you any starting ground to, to, to work from.
Okay. Okay. So, so let me just ask you a technical question. You know, we're talking about 200 versus 500 feet, correct? The, what was submitted is that there is a circle. And we're talking when, assuming that the building inspector was correct and he's looking at the property boundaries, you know, that include the school, that's a church, but whatever, he calls that school grounds, we're talking about 400 and some feet versus 500 feet. Is that correct?
Right. The determination of the unspecified
Yes, unspecified. So it's 400 and some feet versus 500, right? I went and looked at the, at the building. It's, you know, empty. It's, you know, we're talking about the entrance to the building. Is that correct? That's where it's measured from, the entrance to the building? So I believe that's, that's the case.
Yes.
So if that in fact is the case, I mean, is there any way that the building can be accommodated so that it meets a 500-foot, whether it's, you know, I mean, is that the easier way to go than going through all this litigation? I mean, just
That might be, but
I'm raising that as a question for your client.
I appreciate that. And the, the correct venue for that would have been before the planning board. This, this, they're the ones that issue a special exception use, right? That's what it has jurisdiction to do. That's not appellate jurisdiction. You don't go to the planning board for that because you got denied something. You go straight to the planning board for that relief because that's what the, the town code provides. And whether or not, I mean, I don't know, again, it's a mystery what exactly the question that was posed was. But if, yes, if it's 400, if there's a different way to measure that it, it's, it fits within either a 500 or a 200, and that would obviate this whole issue, that, that could have all been, that
Are you saying that you wouldn't consider that now at all?
No, if we get this
That wouldn't resolve the issue that we have here. We have here a determination
But it could withdraw that.
That this property is school grounds. And so it's subject to a 500-foot distance. And you're saying it's a house of worship. And so it should only be subject to 200 feet.
And you also, listen, you also have to remember, this, this interpretation was not made, the applicant did not make this interpretation, right? They, they took their application, they were before the planning board, they thought everything was going great, and the planning board decided to send this to the chief building inspector, which is not typically the way it happens. Usually the applicant says, I need to go to the chief building inspector for interpretation, and they give them all of their evidence. So this is a different, this is an unusual interpretation. So
Absolutely, but I
In the applicant's defense, they, you know, they didn't ask for this interpretation.
There's no need to defend the applicant. The applicant is before us as it stands. And, but I, I really, I'd like to focus this conversation a little bit more because I think we're kind of going off the rails a little bit. So I think I've made myself very clear in terms of what's needed in, with regard to definitions of schools and school grounds. I noticed in the documentation, the Heitler Houston architect memo referencing a February 1, 2023, New York State Office of Cannabis Management, additional clarification regarding dispensary proximity to school grounds. And it states that the guidance clarified when the measurement should be taken from a school building's entrance. And in an excerpt from page 18 of this clarification, a dispensary cannot be on the same road and within 500 feet of a building and its grounds occupied exclusively as school grounds. Now, to the extent that you're going to take any position that, that that clarification has some kind of authority with us, I would need to know from you, you know, OCM is an administrative agency. What authority do they have to interpret or alter New York statutory law? And how is that authority granted? I don't know if you're taking that position. I haven't seen anything that says you are. But in the event that you do, I think that it, you would need to provide us with that documentation, first of all. And second of all, provide us with legal briefing, which shows why we should, why we should credit any clarification or determination by OCM when OCM is not a legislative body or a judicial body.
And I might say, I did a little investigation on that and it appears as if the OCM has changed its position on that, that it doesn't have to be exclusively. So, you know, it appears
So that would be great to have an update with regard to that.
Yeah.
Because it seems to me that since, what we got was a letter saying, this is our appeal, and then the building file, the building department file, which contained this documentation, I don't know if that's an argument you're going to be making. Like, I would expect, and I think the board is going to expect you to do briefing.
I said, we're, so Do that. But I would say that this section of the discussion is wandering into an area that takes us somewhere else that I think is outside the bounds of
No, it takes us exactly where we need to be. It takes, no.
Can I finish the sentence, please?
I'm going to tell you what this board needs in order for us to determine your application. And we're going to, this is what we need from you. So you can say, it goes far afield all you want. This is what we need. And you then, as the applicant, have the opportunity to either go, sure, I'll comply and I'll give them what they need, or I won't and I'll stand on it and I'll stand or fall with the application.
But you don't, you don't need things that have anything to do with 500, 200, whatever. I mean, it doesn't matter what OCM is saying about setbacks. It doesn't matter what the town code is saying about setbacks. It matters whether St. Rosalie's is operating as a school or has any kind of school definition in the town code.
Yes, but to the extent that it's, but to the extent that OCM is taking the position, if it is now or not, that the grounds are defined as school grounds when they're occupied exclusively as school grounds, that is relevant to this discussion. Absolutely relevant.
So, as I was attempting to say, yes, I would say that is highly relevant and highly persuasive for an interpretation that you might make and which we would encourage you to make. However, if we're, if we're citing to OCM and the state cannabis law, there's no way to address that issue without accompanying it by the argument and the law that this is entirely preempted by state law. So the question is not, can we glean something from OCM regulations or state law to help us interpret this? If we're looking at state law, we have to look at the fact that under preemption policy, if there's a field that the state has fully occupied, then these regulations don't apply at all, period. But that question is not before you. That would be something that might make the application to the planning board irrelevant and, and remove their power to impose either the 200 or the 500-foot restriction. But if we're talking about, you know, borrowing from and looking at the state law, we are happy to do that because I think it's fully supportive of our position. But it would be impossible to do what I attempted not to do, which was to overcomplicate the narrow question before you with these preemption issues. But you have counsel, you can under, be, get a, you know
Look, if you want to make a preemption issue, you can, a preemption argument, you certainly can in a briefing. That would be fine.
But the, a preemption argument, your jurisdiction under town law 267A is to review an interpretation of the town code by the building inspector. You
See, we're going back to this, you're going circular. Why, why can't we just get beyond this point? That statutes themselves, the code itself refers to the Department of Education, refers, uses language directly out of the education law. And that would help, I'm actually trying to help you. You think I'm adversarial to you. I'm trying to help you make your argument. That would be a cogent argument. If you could show us that under state law, school and school grounds are defined in a way that's beneficial to you, that would help you. I don't understand why you're being so resistant.
Okay.
So let's just move on, but I want to move on from that because we keep going back.
Okay. So wait, John, Mr. Hill, how much more do you want to do? You understand now that we're going to need a fairly extensive briefing. I think John's been very clear in terms of, you know, the definitional stuff that he, he is seeking.
I have other issues that I need, I need to
Okay.
address with regard to this application.
Okay. So, but at this point, it almost sounds like, let's get the questions out that we have and issues that we have. And then you, you know, you can address them in a written submission because I think that we're just going to be arguing back and forth at this point. And it just, we need to actually look at something in writing so we can have a chance to mull it over and take a look and do our own little research on it. So how do you feel about that?
Absolutely. This is, this is purely
Because all we're doing is arguing back and forth and it's, we're not getting, we're talking circular, like John says. But let's, you know, let's, you understand what we need?
I do.
And
Well, there's more that we
If you've got a couple more, let's list them out. But I think at this point, don't engage in terms of what, you know, because don't respond because we can't, we have to look at it in a written form. I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay.
This is the way we're going to have to do that. Okay, John, go ahead.
Okay. So the, the next thing, you know, when you're looking at the definition of house of worship under 331-6226C and C4, a question for me becomes, does St. Rosalie's cease to be exclusively occupied as a house of worship, notwithstanding its incidental uses? Is Our Lady of the Hamptons' use of the parish house an incidental use such that it doesn't deprive St. Rosalie's of its designation or characterization as a house of worship? I think you need to address that for us.
May I do that right now, please? Because I can do it very quickly.
No, we're not, we're gonna
No, we're not gonna
Take the rocks.
No, no, no. Take notes, not rocks. Take notes.
You're, everything that you're asking me, I have yet to get to because you, I haven't been able to
Well, but the thing is this, you are not prepared tonight with an act, hold on, with an actual brief with any of the legal precedents that we are going to need to see. If you had a brief, we would actually say, well, we're going to need to read it and we would hold this open anyway. This is being held open and we're going to give you a briefing schedule. But here's something else that we need. Let's see. Does St. Rosalie's religious instruction deprive it of its house of worship status? The fact that it is engaged in some educational activity, I don't know. What is the interplay between a school and a house of worship? Does one trump the other? I mean, that's, I think, is something that you need to be looking at. In order for St. Rosalie's to be a school, does education have to be its sole enterprise? That's going to be in the definition of a school through either Department of Education or the education law. What is, there's got to be a hurdle you have to reach. And are there certification requirements, regulation requirements? Those are things that you should be looking at in terms of the definition to determine whether St. Rosalie's can be credibly characterized as a school. Then I think you should also look at community facility. You know, I noticed that Anthony's letter to the chief building inspector specifically asked him whether this was school grounds or a community facility. And you know, those are the three categories under 331-2662. It's school grounds, community facility, or a house of worship. And so I don't feel that the, the building inspector's letter adequately addressed both of those issues. And I don't think it would hurt for you to address all of those issues as well. So what is the definition of a community facility? Does it have a municipal element to it? Why doesn't St. Rosalie's qualify as a community facility? And specifically with the fact that the definition of community facility in the town code deals with a facility for the purpose of public or private recreation? And so my question is basically, how does that apply to St. Rosalie's and does it?
I'm not sure I agree that you had to address that.
I think it would be helpful.
Well, it might be helpful, but I don't think you necessarily have to address that since that's not the appeal that we're taking.
So Susan, may I just ask one question? Katie, at the beginning, you made reference to change in the zoning. And I would like to understand, at some point, whether that moots the entire conversation.
I don't know whether it does. And that's, that's kind of what I wanted to ask you, only, only because I know that this is an interpretation and it's sort of attached to your property and, and it's important. But I also had a little bit of a concern because there has been a change of zone and I know that's in dispute, but there has been a change of zone that no longer allows, says that the, the proposed use is permitted on this property. And so I just was wondering, does that take away?
Change in ours, we changed.
The town board changed the zone.
The zone.
The zone of several properties whereby the cannabis use dispensary is no longer permitted, right? I mean, that's what, that's what the change of zone says.
Yes.
That's what the change of zone says, again. And so I was just, I was trying to think about standing, right? Because typically, you know, we don't just, you know, typically the building department doesn't give you an interpretation based on someone else's property. Typically, it's on your own property or if your neighbor gets a CO and you're challenging that CO. You know, I mean, there's, there's sort of some standing. And so I just was trying to figure out, I don't, I wanted you to maybe just put something together because I haven't had a chance to research it either. But I just wanted to make sure that they still sort of had standing to address this issue because regardless, you know, whether this board finds, let's say we proceed anyways and we say you do have standing, no matter what this board would say, it really wouldn't affect your property until there's a determination as to whether or not the change of zone has, is, is upheld, right? Because.
Is it retroactive? I mean, you know, what's the timing on it?
Well, that's, if I can address that.
Yeah, I'd like you to.
So, it's, it's not moot because even if that, the new zoning applies, our, our relief would be to seek a use variance from this board rather than a special exception from the planning board. And in that use variance application, the same question would come up. So, the, the decision whether the church is a church or a school remains material to whatever path forward there, there is here under the old zoning or the new. And so, that's one answer for why it's, it's not moot. But in the bigger picture, the reality is that with respect to this applicant and the history here, and we're not addressing this in this forum, but the goalposts have moved many times. And the last instance of that was the, the change of zone which, you know, took, took this away. But in terms of the, the temporal sequence, at the time that this was before the planning board and this issue of interpretation was up in, in the beginning of this year, that was, the zoning then was what it was. And but for the erroneous, what we're, our position is appeal is, decision on that interpretation issue, we would have been before the planning board measuring whether or not, as you were talking about before, this, the distance is in comports with the 200-foot restriction to a house of worship. And so getting this issue right is important both for going forward even under the, the change of zone or which we would argue is going to have to be the case, that you'd have to look back and put us in the position we would have been if this decision was made correctly at the time that it was asked.
I actually would agree with that.
Yeah, I, I think that that's.
As you said that, because if, if they applied for the use variance, then it would be, do they need the 500-foot setback or do they need the 200-foot setback?
Yeah. Okay, I think if you could also make a recommendation to, you know, include that discussion in any of your written submissions.
Sure. So, I'll wrap up particularly with the opportunity to follow up with a, a written brief. The, just very quickly, I appreciate your points on the issues with subsection C on house of worship, just noting that there's, in subsection four of that section, there's an enumerated list of things that don't make something, take, remove that. And some of those are quite broad, including use of building by other religious organizations or groups for religious services or other purposes. So this school is not run by St. Rosalie's. This is, I'm forgetting the name, but this, the school is, has its primary school elsewhere and the, the preschool function operates out of this location. But it's not a St. Rosalie's school. So, this would be right within that subsection four, C category of the enumerated uses that do not deprive it of being exclusively a house of worship. And I think the purpose of that definition, that if something is or is not exclusively used, is meant to determine whether that, the 200-foot provision applies at all, not whether you revert back to the 500. But if it's, if it's not exclusively a church, then you don't have the 200-foot restriction at all. But I would submit that, you know, we're, we're likely in one of those categories anyway. So just very briefly, the, the second piece of this, what we would say this, this appeal to this board is from the, the building inspector's letter, is that under Town Law 267A, as I started in the beginning, this is an appeal from that interpretation, house, school versus church. But it's also a, a, an appeal from, to the extent that that March 6 letter is a actual determination, which, because there is nothing before the building inspector for him to determine. There was no building permit application and the request for a special exception, that the, the planning board has the exclusive jurisdiction over that issue. So, there was no, nothing for the building inspector to decide. If, if they asked him, as often happens, for an advisory opinion about something, then it would have still been up to the planning board to either adopt that or take it into consideration or reject it. The fact that it's been treated as a actual determination that ended for that portion of the proceedings, the request for a special exception before the planning board is, is wrong as a matter of law. There's, you know, that's outside the building inspector's authority to decide the special exception. And there was no other, there was no other question posed to the building inspector. There was, as I said, it's not as if this was a building permit application and you got a denial and then your, you know, your relief is to come here for a, a variance. So, I appreciate the time. Sorry if I got a little animated. I, it's, like you said, it's an important issue. I do think that there is, you know, nuance and, and lawyer's work to be done in, from both sides or however many sides there may be in, in coming to an interpretation. And we may disagree with what the proper sources of that are. I would, I would just come back to one of the original points was that, that's all well and good if, if you need to. But it's, it's highly, I would submit that the definition of a school in the town code is so clear and unambiguous in terms of what it has to be because of that emphasis on.
We look forward to your briefing.
That will control.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hill. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this matter?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, so what kind of time are we looking at here? For you to get back and.
When is your next meeting?
It's August 21st.
Yeah, you're going to need to get us something by next week. That, I don't think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I think, you know.
I think you're, you're looking at the October 2 meeting.
There's nothing in September?
Probably, no, not, there's one, absolutely no September meeting. And the, the, the September 4th meeting is, is not a good meeting for that. October 2nd is probably better.
So, let me just be foolishly ambitious and give myself an out. If, if there were a date by which I got you a brief, what would be the, the latest date?
To make the next meeting, to make August 21st? Candace? At least a week ahead.
We can set it for the, try to set it for the 21st and if they need more time, they can request.
I think the 21st is way ambitious.
Oh, that's a different issue.
Extremely ambitious.
Well, only because even if you got, you know, I mean, Candace is probably going to tell you, you know, you have a week, but, but the board is going to.
The board has to digest it.
Yes, I, I, that's why I'm asking, how much time you'd need.
Are you going to say October 2nd? No.
Yeah, no.
It's, it's summer, it's, you know, I would say that.
You could put it on and we could adjourn it.
Yeah, but it's, it's our responsibility.
Well, I think we also have to take into consideration that we need time to digest it and we need to be able to read it. So why don't you provide us?
If you give us a mail Tuesday, by the time they get it.
I'm not going to be able to.
They're going to have a couple of days to.
No, it's, you know, it's the timing in terms of the summer and everything else is really, really a problem.
Why don't you provide it to us sometime in September and we'll have it for the October 2nd meeting?
Yeah, let's do that. But give us enough time to di, this isn't like looking at a new survey.
I, I agree.
This, this is going to require some effort on our part. So, I would say that we're going to need at least three weeks in advance of, for the October 2nd meeting. What do you say, Candace? We need to get it.
If you give us the beginning of September, the first week of September.
September 5. Oh, that's after Labor, how about September 12?
For submission.
For submission and for us, October 2nd here, continued hearing.
I would try to find for that, actually.
What?
If I get it on the 12, you'll get it.
We'll get it on the.
16 or 17, and that's still, I mean, unless you, unless you feel like a week is.
Well, if you were trying to be ambitious and have it next week.
No, we're not putting it on until October 2.
Let's do it the Friday before that then.
September 12.
Well, what's the Friday before? September.
How long until the 17th did you have?
9th.
One, two, we'll have two weeks if we get it.
Is that a Friday?
I don't know if it is or isn't.
Friday, September 9?
Do you think two weeks is enough for you to review it? I mean, you can.
That's plenty.
You can tell that we're expecting it to be somewhat extensive, in-depth. That's what I'd like to see.
Okay, so I would say Friday, the 9th, right?
We don't have a Friday, no.
It's the 12th. September 12 is the Friday.
September 12. It's a Friday.
Second.
All right, so we're going to have written submissions.
Hold on, hold on. I'll make the motion.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Okay. So, we're going to have a brief due from the applicant by September 12 and hold a, the hearing on this application open to October 2nd.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Ms. Kane. Shareboat's eye. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, let me just get my stuff. Is the written submission period open to?
Everyone.
Everybody.
So if there were, if there was something submitted, could we just request to be notified of that so we could?
Opposing, opposing your, yes, absolutely.
Opposing or maybe agreeing?
Supporting, yeah.
No, if you don't have the consent, you cannot, I'm not going to remember the submissions.
All right, so check with Candace if there's other submissions.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Number eight on the agenda, application of Mary Ann E. Flanagan, 60 Summit Boulevard, West Hampton, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-354-47. Applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code for proposed addition to an existing dwelling on a non-conforming lot. One, Section 330-6, general regulations that references 330-11, residents, districts, table of dimensional regulations for principal total side yard setback from 45 feet to 26.9 feet and a principal minimum side yard setback from 20 feet to 8.7 feet. And two, Section 330-84D pyramid law for a sky plane approachment to the north in the amount of 478.8 cubic feet and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Okay.
I'm exhausted. I can't imagine how you guys.
Welcome to us, yes. All right, so I know you're an attorney, attorneys?
Architect.
Architect. Okay, let me swear you in. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Please state your name and addresses separately.
I'm Mary Ann Flanagan, 60 Summit Boulevard, West Hampton.
Thank you.
I'm Peter Baldwin.
And your address?
Park Circle, Quogue, New York.
Okay, and.
For the applicant, James N. Hume, 323 Mill Road, West Hampton Beach. Good evening and you may hear me refer to my client, to my writer's Beth, which is a name which is not commonly known as.
Oh, all right.
So, just don't be confused if I do.
Thanks for clarifying.
Because it was a long time after I knew you that I found out. But in any event, we're here looking for some relief to basically expand a very small existing garage on a modest home located on Summit Boulevard in West Hampton. If you, you can see from the survey, you can also see from the, the plans which I've spread out in front of you, the existing home has a garage which is only about 11 or 12 feet in width. This modern era of vehicles and people needing to store things and bicycles, so a garage is not really helpful. In addition, there's an existing office behind the garage and again, in this world where people are working remotely, office space is a much more important thing than it ever was before. So that's what's driving the train here. The existing lot is about 17,000 square feet. It's a little over 95 feet in width. As I said, it was a one-story home which was built in 1973 with an attached garage. There's also pool, hot tub and patio, all of which is shown on the survey and all of which is covered by the COs that were submitted as part of this. The lot, where the lot is located in the R20, as you can see, it's a little substandard from the area requirement for the R20. However, the property benefited from a 1973 zoning board which created this lot and the lot to the north with the, with the dimensions and sizes as indicated. So, what we're looking to do, as I indicated, is to expand the garage to the north, which necessitates the three separate variances that are discussed. So we're looking for a garage that's, sorry, sorry to the guy in the back. Now 20 feet instead of, instead of 10 feet, which creates the, the need for the side yard setback, both the single and, and the total, as we're not making any changes to the south side of the house. I would point out that the, the driveway of the house to the north is just the other side of our property line. So it would be driveway, garage, garage, driveway to driveway. So, with, I think that the impact would be minimal if, at all. The pyramid relief that we're, we're seeking is, is driven by the fact that we would like to have a continuous roof from one end of the house to the other. And so the roof peak does in fact pierce the, pierce the pyramid, pierce the sky plane in the amount of 478 square feet. But I think to cut the roof off architecturally or slope the roof on that end would, would make for an odd-looking house, especially a house that's been there since 1973 with a, a peak roof that runs north to south. So that's in a nutshell what we're looking to do. Great benefit to the applicant in, in the expanded garage and a little bit more office space and a new laundry room. And, but I think little, little impact to the neighborhood is all. I think in a year or so, everybody will think that this is the house that was always there.
John, this is yours.
Yes, so, you know, I'm over there, so I've been to the property. At first I felt maybe a little too close to the house next door. Have you spoke to your neighbor at all? Anybody?
She has not. We have not heard from her. I don't know if she's on or not, but.
Same concern.
You know, because we're only, you know, less than nine feet at that house. That house is also pretty close.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. So, we did not reach out, but we did not hear anything either from that particular neighbor.
I also appear to have a garage right next to the prop, right on the property line.
It's so close.
Yeah.
I would say my initial was, you know, I wasn't liking, then I came back and thought that I think it's okay except for it's so close to your neighbor.
Right.
What are you thinking in terms of vegetation?
Well, that was, that was, that was in my notes. I mean, we would, we could put a hedge, a privy.
Is there a hedge there now? Is there something there right?
There's a tree or something.
Yeah, what's going to happen to that big tree? It can stay? Oh, bye.
May I?
Yes, please.
There's a really big maple tree towards the back, but I have two giant pine trees that hang over her driveway that she's asked me to trim and pine trees over, are overgrown. They do need to go.
Trim, trim on her side or?
Yeah, and to have half of.
I, I get it.
It's a little ridiculous, yeah.
Something very narrow in terms of vegetation.
Are you going to keep that existing hedge or that's going to go along the driveway?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, because it's so close that you would have to do something to mitigate. I mean, are there windows on that, on, on that side? There are.
Peter, you want to talk in the garage?
Yeah, the garage.
There are two windows planned for the garage just to get some natural north light and a window planned for the laundry room as well to get natural light into the laundry room.
I wouldn't be so concerned about that though because you're not living in the garage and the laundry room.
Nobody's going to see anything.
It's a living space.
That's what I'm saying. It's not going from living to living.
It's the office that I was thinking about.
The office has a window, but it's, it's facing towards the backyard.
Okay, it's not facing.
It's not overlooking the neighborhood.
Okay, well, that makes more sense, yeah.
I'm going to be honest, I, I don't have any problem with this. And the reason I don't is because it's on a driveway. Doesn't make any sense.
Well, you know, we always are concerned about narrowing, you know, the side yards. So in this case, it's probably not as detrimental as it would be in other circumstances. But I really do feel that you've got to come up with some kind of suggestion in terms of buffer cell.
We could propose a—
As part of a written submission.
If I could also make the suggestion, I know, so the question is, you know, is the garage for cars or is the garage for storage? That gives you some flexibility. And then with respect to the question on the office, I mean, this aerial picture shows this very strange trapezoidal-like property line. And the survey looks a little different. So I'm trying to reconcile whether you have more room on the back.
The survey shows the exact property. The, when I printed the aerial photograph, I only identified the front part of the lot.
But the survey, the survey identifies two different tax map numbers. Have they been merged?
Effectively, yes, but there's still two tax maps. So if that's a requirement of good decision, we would certainly do that.
Well, where I'm going with the question is, you know, could, is there room to put the office on the back of the house?
The office is going on the back of the house.
Right, and then the garage being less imposing and less—
At that point, I don't think it would matter, you know, it makes sense to do.
My idea is just to throw out ideas.
See what sticks.
To the extent that we have an office at all right now, it's in that location. So we're really just expanding.
So you just want to expand on that office? Okay, thank you for that.
But I, going back, so this is another lot here.
Yes, and that's, but that's owned by her.
Okay.
Common owner, right?
Yes.
Right, okay.
So it, that it has to be a condition that they be merged, otherwise I need a separate survey.
Absolutely, yeah.
Should have thought of that beforehand, but we will—
That will be a condition of the approval. Because I was really, couldn't believe the difference. It was very strange.
Me, too. I was flipping it around.
Okay, so what I'm looking at is some sort of a written submission that will deal with the hedging or the landscaping. And as a condition of any approval would be the merger of the two properties.
So who's the person you asked for?
That, some sort of a hedging along the driveway, separating the two properties. Yes, he's going to provide some sort of a plan, landscape plan. Is there anything else that anybody on the board wants to suggest? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on 60 Summit Boulevard? Anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on 60 Summit Boulevard?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, John, this is yours.
All right, so we're going to close the hearing with written submissions for 8:22 and a decision for 9:04.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Revan, let's both first, before you say thank you. Make sure we got this. Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess. Chair votes aye. Okay, thank you.
Good to see you all. Have a good evening.
Okay, number 10 on the agenda, the application of Joseph Taylor, 103 West Tiana Road, Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-257-2-5. Applicant requests relief from the town code, Section 330-6, general regulations that references Section 330-11, residents' district's table of dimensional regulations for a principal front yard setback from 40 feet to 34.9 feet to legalize a covered porch constructed without the benefit of a building permit on a non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Okay, um, are you an attorney? Okay, let me swear you in. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name and address.
Joseph Taylor, and 2252 Roy Street, Quogue, New York.
Mr. Taylor, do you want to tell us about the application?
Well, I'm just looking to get a variance for the porch from the house that we erected without a permit and less than 10. Just hoping to have it, get a variance for that. And the reason being is we can put it up just to enhance the beauty of the home so we can just relax and sit in front, have some coffee. And, you know, my neighbors, my neighbors love it. Keeps the house cool in the summer. It's a really nice issue to our home.
So in other words, you built it without a permit?
I did, yes.
Okay, and it's, it requires a variance in order to be approved?
Had there been a porch there before, and so the porch was fully added on? Okay.
Okay. Helen is lead on this. I don't know if she wants to say anything. Helen?
Of course, you know, I'm, I'm never in favor of any construction that was done without a permit. You know, that was very, very bad, very, very bad.
Lesson learned, yes.
But I, I did see the property. And all in all, I, other than the prior construction, I don't have any problem with the porch. So just don't do anything like that again.
Helen, thank you.
I concur with Helen.
Thank you, John. Thank you so much.
It sounds like a lovely enhancement for your property. Is there anybody else on the board who wishes to be heard? Is there anybody in the audience?
One other thing.
Oh, sorry, Helen.
Mr. Taylor, you know, you have to put some railings on. You know that, right? You have railing on one side. You need to rail it on the other side because—
High enough, it wasn't high—
Too high off the ground, you may need a railing.
Yes, exactly.
You should talk to the building department about that, as to what's required in terms of railings.
Yes, it's unsafe right now.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on 103 West Tiana Road? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard?
No one on Zoom.
Okay, Mr. Taylor.
My, my neighbor was—
So I'm going to give you—
Fell asleep.
Okay, okay, well, that's, so, so he didn't want to comment? Maybe he wanted to be positive. Okay, let me just, I'm going to take this for Helen, so we're going to close the public hearing.
Then I can do that. I, I can do that. Thank you for offering, but I can do it. I'm going to close the public hearing.
Okay, go ahead, Helen. Yeah, okay.
Written submissions for August 22nd with a decision on September 4th.
Second.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, sir.
So this means that you're going to get your approval. That's what it means.
Yes.
You just got to wait a little bit.
You got to wait. The final decision will be on September 4th. You don't need to comment. But if there's any written submissions that people who object or whatever, they have until the 22nd of August to submit them.
You'll decide?
We'll vote on it on December, on December, I'm sorry, September 4th.
Then I'll get something in the mail?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the holdover application agenda. Number 15 on the agenda, the application of Lynn Leahy, 15 Tarpon Road, East Quogue, Suffolk County Tax Map number 900-362-4-8.
Okay, where are we? Okay. You've been before us before. Did I swear? I just swear you in, right? Yes, okay. Yeah, right, I just—
I'm sorry to hear that.
All right, um, state your names then, and, and state your names and addresses for the record. That's all.
Michael Leahy, 15 Tarpon Road, East Quogue, New York.
Thank you, Mr. Leahy.
Daphne Vaughn, Surfside Environmental, 4 Happy Acres Drive, Shirley.
Okay, so where are we on this, Daphne?
So we went back to the drawing board and tried to maintain square footage, yet reduce pyramid. So we submitted updated plans, which you should have. The best pages to look at, I'm going to say, are Pages A5, 56, 6A, 6V, and 7. Those are, well, and then the pyramid ones after that, but those are the ones that show—
So this is stuff that we got tonight, okay. So what pages were they?
Well, the first couple of pages are floor plans, which are not that exciting.
Okay.
It's A5, which is the elevation, so you see the differences that we did. So we had it as two full stories box on top of a box, so it was completely squared off. So to try to further reduce the pyramid, they took the second floor and they moved it in a foot on each side and then did these shed dormers on either side and the peak. So it has a little more character than it did originally.
Looks nice.
Yeah.
Looks nice.
And we, as we originally started with this, the house was higher. We were seeking a full garage underneath that has been eliminated. It's more of a crawl at this stage. But one of the good pages to look at is actually A6B, because it shows the elevations in relation to the existing house. So you see in number four, in the other corner here, essentially, the existing house is in pink. So on the, I don't know what side, that is the north side is the one that's closer to the property line.
That's on the south side.
So I'm saying this is the—
South side.
This is the south side?
That's the back of the house. That's the south side. That's the—
The one that's closer to the property right now is the south?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so on the south side, essentially, it's just the dormers and the second floor that, not even the whole second floor. It's also a good illustration here because you can see the existing first floor versus the proposed first floor, which will be FEMA compliant. We're not FEMA compliant right now.
I see.
We're trying to maintain the square footage to the best of our ability without doing something that's going to drastically change the, the house in that it will send us back to the conservation board for a modification of permit. So this preserves the integrity of the square footage that they're looking for that's usable to them. It reduces the pyramid by 441 square feet from our last iteration.
What is it now?
It's 2,550.8 cubic feet, which equates to 1275.4 on either side. The head height of those dormers is at the minimum that it can possibly be, at 6'8". There's cathedral ceilings in parts of the bedrooms in order to accommodate, you know, to make it feel more spacious. So I told you, we already reduced the, the seventh floor by two feet, a foot on each side. And so it's a 10% decrease from our, our last iteration, which is overall just under 50% reduction from our initial, the first plan. The other thing that we're showing in here on that Page A7 that I mentioned is we're showing proposed screening vegetation on both sides of the house and what that would look like. Yeah.
Oh, right, the privacy, yeah.
Yeah, about windows. I did, we did a little reconnaissance mission around the neighborhood, and I should pass these out. I'll give one to Candace. These are very, not professionally done photos, but I'll give them to her.
They're yours.
Actually, Mike took them.
Oh, really? I'm sure they're fine. He's an architect, so. Where am I getting this?
She slammed you there. That was a nice, right?
Okay, here you go.
Not very professionally done.
They had like mirrors in them.
I think they're fine.
Oh, they're fine.
So it basically shows you, shows you windows on sides of houses and the proximity of how— all of the houses there are close to one another. Many of them have two stories. I, I'm not really sure how there's not a lot of pyramid variances here because when you look at some of these homes, you just say, how? It just doesn't make sense.
Okay.
So, so we just wanted to give you this representation. And this is just a small sampling. There are certainly more.
The dormers affect which areas? I'm like confused. It's— They're at the— The second floor, the north and the—
The north and the south side.
Yeah.
So there'd be dormers in these bedrooms and then laundry, or is it—
No, that's the first floor.
Yeah, the second floor, basically—
The bedroom, the bathroom.
Yeah.
Okay.
The beds and baths.
North and south side.
Okay.
All right. So can I just clarify one more time? You've gone from the original request of 5122 cubic feet of pyramid relief to 2550.8.
Yes.
Cut it more than half.
So I went through the neighborhood again in, in advance of today's meeting. And there were some tall structures. None of them have pyramid relief as is requested like this still. And the overwhelming presentation of the community is modest-sized, single-family dwellings, not dominant roofs. There are some exceptions closer to the water, down by the Shinnecock Bay than for most of the street. And I still think, you know, if you lose the sheds on the second floor, I think you're, you're closer. Well, I didn't tell you to buy the house. You're here asking for relief and I'm, and I'm giving you feedback because it's, I still think out of character with the neighborhood and that the relief request being made is excessive. And let me, let me make the last point on this, because I'm remembering the hearings that we had. They were, they were, the houses are very close, which means when you put second stories with windows facing other neighbors, you're living in a fishbowl for a while, right? So at least the neighbors are. And, and that came up in prior meetings. I'm surfacing it because I can identify with that concern. So my job is to give you the feedback. I gave it to you.
Can I respond to that? The houses that were brought up saying that they didn't have any windows on that, which is the second house down from my neighbor who brought that up, they have six windows on that side that they said they didn't have any windows.
They didn't come to us and ask for—
Well, I understand that, but her point was to say that she doesn't have any privacy. And there is no screening on that side between that house and the newer house.
Yeah, that's just—
On my house side, not only would I be putting up screening, in her yard, there's gigantic trees that you cannot even see their house from my yard. And it's, there's a lot of houses now that are going up that have nice roof lines and pitches, and I changed it from a box and created peaks and everything to try and make it more characterized, to be nicer, which I think we had a question.
I think you, I think you did. And I also like your screening plan, which is very helpful. And that would be the condition, obviously, of a variance that we would grant. I, I personally think that you've done a good effort. I mean, I think, you know, you've got some reasons not to change it dramatically and have to go back to the conservation board again. You know, that's my reaction. John, this is yours. So do you want to say something?
I mean, I think the house looks nice.
I think you get a job putting down on the pyramid. For me, I happen to have no problem with it. I like it.
All right, anybody else on the board wishes to comment?
I agree with John. I think you've done a good job. I think you've, you've really, I like that you reduced it by half and you took our comments seriously. And I think you're making something that does look like it would be part, a character of the community. You really, the style itself fits right in.
Yeah, I think it's a—
It's different from the original.
Yeah.
It started then.
It's a positive, really a positive. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on 15th Tarpon Road? And you've been before us before. Do you want to state your name again?
Brian Butler. I'm an attorney for both neighbors, to the left and right. Ms. Hedberg and Gina, Gina, last name. While I heard the notes from each and every one of you, I believe Mr. McDonald has made the most pertinent points, still not in compliance. I don't have the plans because they only got submitted on the first, and it takes 30 days to get a foil. So I haven't been able to see, what is the first and second floor heights?
Okay, you know, we just got the plans tonight also. You're going to have an opportunity to review them, for sure.
Okay.
And you know, you can submit written comments. Well, they're, they'll supply them to you, I assume, correct? Daphne? You're gonna supply him with a set of the plans?
Please supply him with a set of plans.
I can email him a set of the plans.
He just handed us that.
Okay. And, you know, you will obviously have a chance to review and submit any written comments you may have.
Um, and as such, I will review them, but the, the main questions asked last time were the heights of both ceilings, first and second floor. They didn't want to change them, I don't know if those were changed, could, you know, are they nine feet now? Are they eight feet? What are they?
They were changed at the last iteration. I believe that they're nine feet on the first floor and it's eight feet on the second floor. And then we're at a five and a half foot crawl underneath for storage.
Okay, and I believe, uh, the woman who was with us on telecom in the last meeting had stated she would like to see those heights reduced in order to decrease the pyramid. And the person applying, I believe your wife was with you, saying, how am I gonna live in this house?
That was at the first meeting.
Yeah.
Um, once again, as McDonald stated, he didn't tell you to buy the house. You know, we understand that you want square footage, but we still have to stay within the pyramid laws. When you start opening these, these excessive, you know, S, such as twenty-five percent on such small lots, where's the rest of the town gonna go? We're gonna start making this more the precedent now, where you're going to allow twenty-five percent? Because whatever you decide here, I as an attorney will bring up at the next meeting if my client fits into that. So, while it's a nice house, I can appreciate it, I can appreciate you want more square footage. We still have to go by the laws. It's still, it's too big for the neighborhood. It's still looking down on both of my clients. It's a pretty house, there's simple fixes, you may not want to do them, and I'm sorry. But the dormers can go, you can lower the flo- both heights down to eight feet. Lowering the second floor down to eight feet, you get another fifteen percent relief.
The second floor is actually, as I stated, the shed dormers are at six foot eight. And I just looked at my notes, the ceiling height is at seven, seven foot ten, I believe, is where I just saw that. Seven foot one and a half and then it's cathedraled. So it's actually not even seven one and a half, we went down to the six eight from the seven one and a half and it's cathedraled in the bedrooms to give it the full height feel.
What, the first floor is nine feet?
Yes.
What is it currently in the current house?
In many new homes these days.
And, and I can appreciate that in many new homes. But I'm also a builder, anytime I make my plans, you know, I can adjust them. You know, you're building basically a new house, you can adjust this down to eight feet. I know you don't want to and I tr- I understand.
Comment to the board though, I mean, it's getting a little too personal.
Well, I just feel the board has made personal comments towards him about how pretty it is and all that, so I wanna say that I am understanding where he's coming from and, like I said, it could be a nice house. We still have to take into account the neighborhood and the neighbors. All right, and once again, we feel that the twenty-five percent still is excessive, especially for such a close-knit area.
Okay, Mr. Butler.
And also the pictures, did they include addresses of those houses?
Yes.
Some of them.
Some of them, yes.
What is the proximity to this house?
It's the neighborhood. It's a, it's a big neighborhood.
Nineteen is the one with the circles around it. That's the new house right next door to Gina. The seventeen.
Okay, but once again, these people, their new house, is that a new house? Okay.
But that's the ne- but sir, that's the neighborhood.
I, I understand, but I'm asking
It doesn't matter if it's new or it's not, it's what's existing in the neighborhood.
If it's a new house.
Hold up, you're, please, would you let me speak?
No, cause I have a question, I'm sorry, one second, okay? My question is, you just stated they did not have to go for the pyramid law. So whether it's a new house, if it were an old house, then they would have had to apply. Is it a new house or an old house? So I'm sorry for interrupting you, but that's my point.
Right, and we were actually just saying, it's, it's kind of amazing that they didn't need pyramid relief. It may be that those properties are larger and that's why they didn't need the relief.
I don't know that they are, there's very few that are bigger than seventy-five feet wide and a lot of those are corner lots uh, that are on Shinakok Road as you come into the subdivision. Those are longer lots that kind of wrap around the canal.
Is it your position, sir, that this house is much bigger than the other houses in the neighborhood?
It's within, it's a brand new house within the pyramid law.
Okay.
Both of, my neighbor, I'm Gina.
Hi Gina.
Um, I just wanted to say I live next to Mike and I do have a neighbor on the south side and that's number nineteen. Brand new house, looks great, I love it. They built within the pyramid law, they also spoke with me about it. And I was able to agree, um, with them staying in, inside the pyramid law. I would have to look at some of these houses. Other than the house next to me, none of these are on Tarpon, they are on, um, Shinakok Road.
Okay, but that is the neighborhood. It's part of the neighborhood.
Right, yeah. Benita or Marlin. I, I have been doing work in this town for twenty-four years and I have done a ton of work in Shinakok Shores. Many of those homes in the past twenty-four years have become two-story residences. I don't understand how they don't have pyramid variances.
So, so my, my comment is, you've gotta copy the plans now and you can submit your, your, um, written comments to us. Um, and we will consider that in, in making our determination. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is John, you wanna take the lead on this, John?
Okay, we're, we're gonna close with written submissions for eight twenty-two and a decision on line four.
Second.
Eight twenty-two.
Twenty-two?
Yes.
With a, with a decision on nine four. Um, Mr. McDonald? I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Redbin?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Kane? Okay, thank you, everybody.
Okay, number seventeen on the agenda, Brandon, application of Brandon Josephson and Sarah Church, Twenty-two Bay Avenue, New York. Suffolk County Tax Map Number nine hundred dash five dash three dash thirty-nine.
Carl Benacasa for the applicant.
Okay, can I just wait one second while I get organized?
I know.
Is it? Oh, that's so depressing.
It's happening.
Four months away.
Okay, so, Mr. Benacasa, would you please reintroduce yourself and the architect?
Carl Benacasa, Eight Sixty Montauk Highway, Watermill, New York.
Shirley, Twenty-three Cove Drive, Sag Harbor, New York.
I'm the architect.
So if you recall, the last time we were here, John and Julie were not here the last time, but I submitted a, um, an overview of relief granted in the immediate proximity of this neighborhood. We discussed that at length. I highlighted four grants of relief. One in twenty fifteen for four thousand two hundred and sixty-seven cubic feet. One in twenty sixteen for eight thousand five hundred and thirty-two cubic feet. One in twenty twenty-three for five thousand three hundred and seventy-three cubic feet. And one just last year for three thousand eight hundred and seventy-one cubic feet, all within a tight radius of this, in, um, in Pine Neck, of this home. When we were last here, we, we had reduced from the original request of five thousand six hundred and eighty-seven cubic feet, we reduced that to four thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven cubic feet. Based on the record we made with the other variances granted in the, really, in the very recent past, I believe Rob and John were in favor, were so, uh, comfortable with that four thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven cubic feet, but Kevin had a suggestion to bring it down even more. We took Kevin's suggestion and I hate to say it, that Kevin was right, so David will go through what we did.
Is that in your July twenty-fourth letter? Or is there a subsequent?
No, it's the July twenty-fourth letter, yes.
So the, the plans that you have, or the elevations that you have in the packet show the, uh, new roof pitch. And we had a twelve twelve pitch with a forty-five degree angle. Um, I brought it down to a ten twelve pitch and in doing so, was able to shave off nine hundred and forty-three additional cubic feet. And in doing that
And so what's the bottom line now?
Thirty-eight ninety-four. Which is ju- it's almost exactly what that relief granted last year was.
And we're down seventeen ninety-three from the original request.
Or about thirty percent.
And in addition to having, you know, shaved off that additional cubic footage, we also were able to lower the, um, ridge height twice, the, the first time we lowered it a little bit and then the second time it came down more. We're twenty-seven inches lower than we were from the original application and we're eighteen inches lower than we were last month, so.
What is it now?
Um,
Twenty-five two? Is that what it is?
No, thirty? Yeah, whatever, um,
No, it's thirty-two.
No, it can't, it's not thirty, it, it's thirty-two above, uh, Yeah. It's twenty-five foot two above average natural grade, it's thirty-two point five above mean sea level.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
Twenty-five point, twenty-five feet two.
So just in light of that, I would just go over again, Twenty-One Dog Street is the variance that was decided last year by unanimous board that granted relief of three thousand eight hundred and seventy-one cubic feet, that's in the immediate proximity of this house. Uh, I would note that that lot is twenty-five feet, or our lot is twenty-five feet more narrow and therefore twenty-five feet more burdened than Twenty-One Dog Street is. And we're now asking for the same, essentially the same relief. I would also note that our lot, uh, has an existing, um, pyramid encroachment of just over a thousand cubic feet. It's just over a thousand cubic feet. Uh, making the impact in the, or the change in the pyramid encroachment from the neighbor's perspective, really a difference of twenty-eight hundred. Now, as Katie pointed out, we don't have grandfathered rights to that, but I think it's relevant considering the impact. So, in light of that, I think we, we've made a very thorough record, uh, as to why we would be entitled to this relief based on the burdens on the neighborhood, on, on the neighborhood and specifically the burdens on this lot. The relief granted in the, in the immediate proximity of the neighborhood, we've worked, um, the board on multiple occasions to reduce it, a total of th- thirty, roughly a third of what we had been, or two-thirds of what we had been asking to reduce in the third. Um, I've presented, uh, a variety of examples of relief granted, uh, in the very recent past by this board. And, uh, we would note that, uh, Pine Neck is replete with these sort of relief because it was zoned so it was built out prior to zoning in such a way that the lots are incredibly burdened. And the, the board has recognized this over the years. So based on that, um, based on the fact that in light of the neighborhood conditions, this is not substantial, this is not self-created hardship. Again, this is a zone R forty, this lot is, you know, seventy-five hundred square feet. It's reasonable in light of the conditions and the nature of the relief has been reduced to such an extent in collaboration with this board. I submit that this is a reasonable request of relief.
So this is me, I, I do appreciate all the adjustments you've made and the work over time. I appreciate that you've acknowledged Kevin was right.
It's hard to do sometimes. I still think it's too much.
I'm very, I'm not surprised when I hear you say that, but I do appreciate it and I think, you know, this is an area that is, it's burdened because of lot sizes. I'm, I'm more comfortable, I don't love it. I, I do wanna say, Carl, you, you said you're entitled, you're definitely not entitled to the relief, but you've made good arguments for it.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, uh, talking about the pyramid is, uh, Kevin, did you wanna say anything about that? Cause I have another comment.
Uh, well, I mean, my principal concern is, I know you you made, provided us with a lot of data, about a lot of different things that are happening and I get it. The principal impact that I read, took from some of your data, which I appreciated, was a house on either side has an average pyramid relief of a thousand and the nearest next house that was granted pyramid relief from this location had a roughly two thousand, uh, uh, cubic feet of pyramid relief. Add that all up and divide it by three, the, the, the three nearest houses have about fifteen hundred, uh, cubic feet of pyramid relief and this request is, I think, considerably larger than that. And the principal concern that I have is if you keep adding more and more to the averages of existing pyramid relief, it's an arms race to the biggest house in the world. And I guess, you know, we live here long enough, that'll happen. But in the meantime, I, you know, this, this concerns me, it was supposed to be granting the, the, uh, the m- m- minimum relief necessary to alleviate a, a, a perceived right to the relief. And I, 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 I'm troubled by our capacity to continue being comfortable with too much, in my view. And with full respect to the applicant, their agents, and the rest of the board.
Okay. Go ahead, Helen, go ahead.
Uh, I agree totally with Kevin. I know that Carl comes in with large, large, large numbers, which I've seen over and over and over again.
You're really fair to say.
Is to impress us by the fact that we moved that number down. That does not work with me, Carl, because I know what you're doing. And I think to say, because it's a small lot, therefore he should get so and so and so. Maybe if it's a small lot, we can have a small house. When you buy that lot, that doesn't mean you can have any size house that you want on that lot. So I am not in favor of this application.
Okay, I think you've made yourself clear. I just wanna say that the neighborhood itself has really transitioned. And I think what Ju- Julie was talking about is that maybe the two houses, the three houses within the area. But, you know, you make a good, a good argument about the fact that there's a lot of pyramid relief in this area and they're, you know, beautiful homes and they're going up and they're, you know, and we're gonna try to keep a, we're gonna try to keep some control over that. I mean, you know, somebody comes in with five thousand, forget it, don't even bother coming through the door. I do appreciate very much that you've made these accommodations and, um, so I'm, I'm not opposed to the accommodations that you're making. However, I do wanna ask a couple of things. One is, we're talking about the setback for the generator. What are we gonna do about abating some of the noise of that generator? I mean, those generators make an enormous amount of noise, you're talking about four, you know, four feet. A setback variance of four point three feet, so it's gonna be at five point seven feet. So what's the suggestion on that?
Would you like some noise abatement?
I would like some noise abatement screening, that doesn't catch fire when the, when the generator turns on.
The neighbors have, they've already been just
Okay. All right, so Carl can repeat for you.
They have been in discussions with the neighbors about doing that, they're happy to do that. You can condition the variance on noise abatement.
Okay, we're gonna do that. Um, and what was the other thing? Oh, we, are we still waiting for wetlands permit?
That's been approved.
It's been re-approved, okay. Um, that's my comments on the
We can have that submitted for the record.
Yeah, absolutely, we gotta have that for the record.
There's a different professional working on that, I'll have them submit to the
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Of Twenty-two Bay Avenue? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on Twenty-two Bay Avenue?
No one.
Okay. So, is this mine?
No, it's me.
Oh, it's you, Julie, good.
Okay, so it's, it sounds like we are ready to close the public hearing. We're gonna keep it open until August twenty-two for written submissions with a decision on September fourth.
Second.
Ms. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Redbin?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, um, let's see, where are we? Uh, modification request, number eighteen. Forty Ocean View Drive LLC, Forty Ocean View Drive, Schenochak Hills, Suffolk County Tax Act number nine hundred dash two seven one dash one dash forty-four. And I wrote this in the wrong place.
The advertiser, I can post it in the mail?
We did.
So you got to read it, John, please.
Oh, I have to read it? Oh, I'm sorry.
Please.
On June twenty, twenty twenty-four, by decision number D zero two four oh six four, this board granted a variance for a proposed air condenser unit. This decision also clarified and modified ZBA decision number D oh two two oh eight seven dated August eighteen, twenty twenty-two. With respect to the details and pyramid encroachment of any architectural feature constructed on top of the proposed dwelling. By letter dated June sixteen, twenty twenty-five, Carl Benicasa, attorney for the owner, seeks a modification of the pyramid encroachment calculations stated in ZBA decision number D oh two four oh six four to include the following: Relief from town code section three thirty dash eighty-four D Pyramid Law for a sky plane encroachment of eighteen cubic feet to legalize a rooftop railing.
Board has jurisdiction. All right, we're waiting for Mr. Benicasa to come and tell us about this.
So this is a minor modification of relief previously granted. When this board last reviewed this, through the process, there was a roof deck that was permitted and constructed with a safety railing as required by law. In reviewing it final for approval, they realized that that safety railing created additional pyramid encroachment of about one percent of the leaf relief that was previously requested. So we are here today after review by the building department to ask for nineteen cubic feet of relief for that glass railing. You can see at the top of the structure.
And how was that missed by the?
It wasn't on the last plans that this board saw. It wasn't. But it was submitted to, submitted for approval to the building department who required it for safety reasons. And then it was built through the process and then as they're COing it, they realized you need relief for that.
Why wasn't it on the, the plans that we approved?
It was not part of the application at that point.
You weren't?
No.
Do we know who submitted those plans?
The architect would have submitted.
Okay, what was the architect's name?
Brian Glazer's office, Glassing House.
I'm kind of irritated.
I mean, you know, we, we already made one modification and now we're coming back. Granted, it's what, eighteen or nineteen feet? But it's aggravating, you know, it's like, you know, bites at the apple. And this is one that should have easily been picked up by the architects and, you know, dealt with originally. I mean, obviously, it's a safety issue, you know, I don't think we're going to have much.
Exactly, what are we going to do?
Yeah, there's not, we don't have much options, but I just have to express, you know, concerns about, you know, coming back to us on a number of occasions. And this was a controversial application in the beginning.
Yeah, I was not a part of it.
I know. Well, I don't mean, I'm not trying to yell at you, you know, but I'm just trying to make a statement. But, but I, you know, I just, I, you know, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I was, you know, a little bit aggravated by this, to say the least.
I definitely appreciate that.
Is this, is this the only variance issue? There's no lights up there, there's no, no, you know, beam lights to the moon or anything like that?
This was reviewed by the building department. They reviewed our application, confirmed that it was this, that's it, the nineteen.
And it was part of the, it was part of the plan, it was on the plans that were approved by the variance?
By the building department, not by the variance.
But they weren't submitted to us with those plans or else somebody had calculated it when they submitted it.
What was submitted to this board for approval, but the building department required it as part of the building set.
So in other words, was. That's what we're going to hear. We're going to hear that what was built was not what was approved by this board. So when we approved this, did we approve it with the fact that people were going to go up there and actually be on the roof?
I understand that there was a roof deck on the approved, yes. Can I get that checked?
Yeah, I think we need to check that because, you know, obviously we don't have our files from that.
Sure.
So if you.
Yes, that was, the roof deck was always part of it.
That would be good to confirm, I agree.
Yeah, we need to confirm that, Carl.
Sure.
In a written submission or whatever. Because if it was just a roof and it didn't need a railing, then, you know, maybe that's why it was never included. But if in fact it's now going to be a roof that's used.
There was a point, a rear, a point, if you look, I know there was a modification to the, I guess it's the north side of the home up here. This structure here, there was an attempt or a thought to make that accessible. It is not. But this portion was always meant.
You understand, you understand the concern we have, right? It's, it's.
It's like, you know, is this being used in a way that we weren't aware of when we?
Or wasn't represented to us initially. We approved it with one understanding and now it's coming back with.
It's different.
If you, you want clarification on that, we can absolutely.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Is that agreed by the board?
Yes.
Some clarification on that?
So do you want to get the clarification and then deal with this?
Well, we have people here. Pardon me? We have people here. No, I understand, but. I, so I think we need clarification that the, what we originally approved included the idea that it was going to be used as a roof deck. Is that the, that's the clarification that we want?
I mean, I don't remember it, right, but it could have just been, you know, access to some utility for an air conditioning or something. And now it's, it's livable space in effect.
Usable space.
And I think that's the issue. And then with livable space comes other activities that may encroach in the neighborhood in a way differently than we understood it.
Yeah, and, and as I said too, that, you know, it's a, it's a pretty egregious failing on the part of the architect. Any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application? Okay, please. Have I sworn you in before on this?
Not on this, no.
Okay, then let me swear you in. Are you an attorney, you're not an attorney?
No, I'm an architect.
Okay. So. You can tell you're an architect. I am not going to be able to say that.
No, it's in the, it's in your handout too. It's the same.
I think we got a handout today?
Yeah, it's the last, I think it's the last.
This one, it's got like some pink highlighted on it?
Yes. Well, they don't, it's, okay.
Before we get into it, let me swear you in.
Okay, please.
You swear, tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name and address.
William Leeds, one fourteen Edgmere Drive, New York, North Sea.
Okay, okay. William, you want to tell us about this?
Okay, well, when you said egregious, the, that's just, what you see is it's eighteen, it's actually eighteen cubic feet, I think. It's not nineteen. It's actually closer to eighteen hundred cubic feet when you actually do the calculation. Because the way the building department determines pyramid encroachment, which is in the memo on item, on your third handout that we gave you, which is highlighted, that we got from the building department. It's not just, the way this architect calculated it, he calculated the cubic footage of the glass. One half inch thick by approximately a hundred and twenty-something feet long. So when you calculate the glass at thirty-six inches high by one half inch thick by a hundred and twenty feet, you come up with eighteen cubic feet. And that's what he did actually back in twenty twenty-two. My clients hired me to check on the cubic footage and this architectural feature on the front, which, may I hand you something?
Candace.
The architectural feature that he did, he also calculated as just the cubic volume of the columns and the beam across the columns. It's, it's very unusual. And so what happened was a, the client, Chris and Lillian, went to the building department and met with the building department several times. And they asked the builder to provide a pyramid encroachment survey, which we have here. And if you go back and look at what was approved by the ZBA in twenty twenty-two, it amounts to about two thousand square feet. When this surveyor did.
Two thousand square feet or cubic feet?
I'm sorry, two thousand cubic feet. When the surveyor did it, he came up with, and it's on your handout there, eleven thousand four hundred and forty-eight cubic feet. And this structure is not built in any way conforming with the height that would be taken originally on the architect's block. So one must really, egregious was the correct word.
Well, if, if in fact, what are you saying, that the house was built not in compliance with what we approved as variance? That is not our determination here.
I know, okay. That's just, that's just background to show that it was, it's been done repeatedly. This isn't the first, the first defense was here and I actually provided a revision when Chris asked me to do that and submitted to the board back in, what date? It was submitted. June twenty twenty-five. I'm not exactly sure when we submitted that, but the eighteen cubic feet is what we're here about, cubic feet railing.
Actually, eighteen was striking me as a bit odd. So what you're saying is it was based on the thickness of the glass? How does that?
I'm not sure what he, are you saying that your staff in the building department don't know what they're doing? This is essentially what he's saying.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
That is what he's saying.
No, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is the architect calculated the pyramid encroachment on the thickness of the glass.
He's saying that the building department, when they reviewed this, missed that it's eleven thousand cubic feet of relief. You approved it twice incorrectly based on inappropriate review or inadequate review by staff in the building department.
In his defense, that did happen with this application.
But ultimately, the approval was the approval.
Correct, but there was, there was a, there was a problem calculating the pyramid in the building department and that's why this memo was issued. Remember, it was from that open. The open area, yeah.
It was corrected.
It was corrected, yeah. But he, I think what he's saying is we didn't.
It was. I'm not saying, this is a survey that the building, builder provided to us. Your builder, your client's builder gave this to us. He had this done for the building department. I, this is probably correct. This is correct.
You got to stand behind it, you got to stand behind it.
I believe it's correct.
Okay, this back and forth, this back and forth.
So you know what, I, I have a, I want to take the conversation in a little bit of a different direction. It is extremely frustrating that we were not given the right information. And this glass thing now that we're being asked to approve, which I feel like I really want to approve because it seems like it's a safety feature. I, what I really want to ask is what would happen if we didn't? Would it have to come down and this roof could not be used in that way?
Well, no, I think the glass would have to be probably relocated.
Relocated to where?
Maybe pushed in, right?
Might be flipped back in to the.
So the usable space is much smaller.
So that it doesn't breach the pyramid line.
And they're overlooking my clients right now. So that's part of the problem is that that railing being right at the edge brings the activities up there which have increased from what I've seen. There's a kitchen up there now. I wasn't aware of that earlier. So there's quite a bit of activity up there and it's a spec house.
And if it were to get crunched in, would the use of it be different?
It would be smaller.
Lesser use.
Be a smaller footprint up there.
I think the question is, was you aware of this roof deck when you approved it? If you were and that livable space, this is an accommodation that's required by the building department.
Well, unless we were given the wrong information.
And unless there was a failure of calculation of pyramid relief required at that time, which apparently, even if we had approved it as a walkout, you know, roof deck, it wasn't included in the calculation. And there's some question as to how you actually do that calculation with glass. I don't know. That I don't understand, but.
But if it was approved as a roof deck and yet the calculation was wrong, does it matter?
It matters to me because when people come before us and make a representation about dimensions, I need to be able to rely on it.
I'm sorry, I've sworn you in, I know, you're very familiar. Just state your name again for the record.
I'm Chris Severnick, the owner, co-owner of the house.
Of this house?
So I would like to.
Are you the neighbor or the co-owner of this?
I'm the neighbor.
Yeah, okay, not this.
Me, sitting on the, on the west side of this house. Now, two issues led to this event here. The first issue is that the builder, owner, whoever, architect submitted two different sets of plans. One set, one plan came to the ZBA and a different set of plans at about the same time was delivered to the building department. Now, this is my tense time here in front of you. The original plan had nothing. It just was a roof deck. There was nothing there, there was nothing planned, there was no railing. The second time around, all of a sudden, there was a railing. And when I questioned this railing here in one of these meetings, I was told, well, it's just a roof and it's just for safety reasons. Now, it has turned into a big party space. It is like an eight-person jacuzzi on top of this roof. There's huge big furniture assemblies. There's a kitchen, a built-in kitchen. There's a gigantic, gigantic grill and about forty feet of this railing sits right next to ten, twenty feet away from our bedrooms. So the windows on that side of our house cannot be used at all. We have to close them all the time because they're looking from the, from the windows in the hallway in the first floor as well as from this, from this party deck up there.
But you just said that the plans always contemplated the roof deck. I mean, yes, or that, right?
Yes, it contemplated the roof deck. Yeah, and to me, I don't know what is happening, but on September eleventh, the building department gave a building permit to build out this roof deck. To build out the roof deck with the kitchen and with the jacuzzi and with all the equipment up there and the couches and lounge chairs, et cetera.
It's ten feet to the property line.
Oh, I know, but what, what we were trying to figure out was when this came to the ZBA, will we have?
It was never there.
But I thought you just said it was always, the roof deck was always on the plans.
A roof deck, there was.
A roof, there was a roof.
There was a roof, that's it.
But no, but no railing.
Nothing.
Well, so to distinguish the point, I'm embarrassed to say this because I just don't have instantaneous recall for applications we might have seen a while ago. But if, if, if there was a deck that was just there versus a deck that is now livable space and being occupied by humans, right, in the manner that somebody's yard or patio might be utilized? And we didn't know that, that's an issue. But somehow we should have known about it.
The deck was there as a space to be used as a deck.
It was not.
Not just a roof.
It was not. It was not. You went there, it was not.
I was there.
I was in every meeting. It was not.
What he was saying was.
We don't know that.
There was no railing. There was, in other words, it was just a flat roof. It was a flat roof.
None of us, none of us had that recall. And that's the original question, I think, that Julie said. We needed to know what was the nature of what was approved. And if it's true that one set of plans went to the building inspector's office and it didn't look like the thing that we approved, I'm really annoyed. Not at you personally, but, but about what happened.
But I can absolutely see why you'd want to get the bottom line.
Yes, we need, we need to get some clarification on this. It's really a major issue.
I would like to add another point. Number one is the two different set of plans. And I went to the archives and I checked the building plans. They were dated March eighth, twenty twenty-two. And about the same time, the building plans were submitted here to the board. Now, the second issue why we have this meetings here again and again is that early in the, in the presentation, the architect floated the concept that an architectural feature does not need to be counted for pyramid, pyramid encroachment. So.
That photo shows you what it encroaches.
So the plans, the plans supplied to the ZBA had only one reason to negotiate the encroachment. encroachment, the maximum pyramid encroachment they could get from the ZBA. The plans in the building department were full-out plans with enclosed font, with enclosed architectural feature. And I don't understand it either, why the building department continued to let these guys build this building this way with.
Over 11,000 cubic feet, according to their surveyor, the builder's surveyor. This isn't mine.
Right, but that's not in our purview right now.
It's inaccurate, and it's not what the building department felt.
This is, this was given to us by the building department. Building department.
The request for relief and determines the necessary relief required.
But we should confirm that the pyramid encroachment for this railing does not need to be calculated like this.
Yeah.
Because this was news to everybody, right? Like, it didn't matter if it was open or if it was closed, they were calculating it all the same way.
The calculations are on there.
No, I remember this. I remember this. But I thought your point was that they didn't use this for the railing. They didn't use this method of calculation.
They did not.
Right, okay.
There's a lot of different things going on, and I, for one, would feel more comfortable if we could, you could go back, reconstruct for us what was put in front of us for approval. And I would frankly request that the architect show up and explain how he got to these calculations and how we ended up with different things being submitted and whether, because 18 is a lot different from 11,000 or whatever the number is.
1,800 cubic feet.
Okay.
Well, I'll confirm that part with the building department. The architect won't be able to explain that.
He says 18.
Katie, I appreciate that, but I'd like to talk to the architect.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm just saying he won't be able to explain that part. He might be able to explain how this roof deck got on there or if it wasn't.
Architect will be at the next meeting.
That would be good.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. All right, are you done with your comments?
Yes. I just wanted to point out the two main reasons why you're here. It's a different set of plans.
The second thing is.
So the ZBA had to make decisions based on incorrect calculations of the cubic feet encroachment.
Okay.
And the ZBA had to make one decision two times, not one decision, based on the wrong calculation that the architect provided.
Okay. All right.
Those are reviewed by the billing department. The relief is the relief. If they're incorrect, that's a question for the billing department, and then we'd have to come back for you for more relief. So if we are asking for 18 cubic feet of relief, and the building department agrees with them that it's 1,800, we'd have to come back for you for another 1,792 feet of relief.
I think either way, you're coming back for whatever you're requesting, because I don't get it. I don't know what I'm being asked for.
Of course, we're coming back. I'm saying for a different application.
He said that. He was going to come back.
Yeah, whether 18 or 1,800.
We need a clarification of what happened, when. And, you know, unfortunately, because we decided this, you know, I didn't keep my records on this, so a lot of that stuff is going to have to be recreated.
Yeah.
Sure. Can I have three minutes?
Oh, three minutes? I'm going to time you.
I'm going to hold worse than you because tomorrow I'm going to be 59.
You know what? I'm, wait a second. You get no sympathy from me at 59.
Good for you.
I should be pre-gaming this, but instead I'm here with you.
All right, just state your name.
Robert Mary Hugh, 250 North Street Road, Southampton. I'm an attorney. I represent the Siverniches. I have said this before, my mother went to school in this very building, okay? So I care deeply about the town of Southampton. And if any of you are familiar, and this is how old I am, because this gets delivered to me every week or whatever, to my mailbox. I still get magazines delivered. This is from February, and its main story is about how you have to deal with what happens at the Hamptons with the billionaires. And your job's only going to get worse because it's not just the billionaires anymore, it's the millionaires. If you, when we.
It's the what? Millionaires.
When we go through the record of what has taken place in the past here, there is direct reference to having space on the roof so that they could store in the winter, they're outdoor furniture under a tarp because they didn't want to use it in the garage, okay? That's what that was for, and it'll come out. The second thing that concerns me is, as an attorney, I, and Carl knows this, Carl's a very good friend of mine, but maybe not anymore.
No, we don't.
So.
Here we go. That's the trailer to a cast.
How did this happen? How did this happen from their own surveyor? And Bill Leeds, who's, you know, an accomplished architect, his figures come out at a little over 5,000, which is twice as much relief as this board eventually granted these people. And this is another end run about, let's take the smallest piece of land, and let's build as much as we can on there. This is an actual, they're selling the house for 9.4 million. This is all over town. I picked one up the other day. This is the house. And there was no outdoor kitchen. This, of course, it has a stainless steel outdoor kitchen on the deck, along with a sauna. That's what it looks like. Just an incident. That's my client's house.
Can I see that?
That's my client's house.
My calculations were based on that architect's drawings, just so you know. And I came up with 5,000, but when they went out and surveyed, the house is taller than what it's shown on his drawings. So I used his drawings to calculate, but the surveyor went out there and actually did field measurements. I trust the surveyor.
Again, we're just, we're asking for the relief we're asking for.
I thank the board for their time.
You can have your. You can have your.
No, I wanted to see it.
Oh, sorry.
Go to the record now.
Yeah. It does have to go into the record minutes.
You looked at it with your eyes. It has to go to the record.
Okay.
Well, just in case, I want to have Bob to need to pull the photographs of that.
And I'll submit them to you early next week.
We have some.
Yeah. Okay, I don't, it's not my recollection of what we had agreed.
Sure, I will help.
But let's.
Refresh your recollection.
You're going to have to do a lot of refreshing on that, but, okay. All right, is there anybody else in the audience? Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application?
No one on Zoom.
Up at the podium, please.
I have, over the last three years, documented every single step of this adventure because it was an adventure and it was unusual for me. And I'm really surprised at what I had to go, what we had to go through in terms of hiring an architect, hiring an attorney to defend a law that is on the books of this town, which is called a pyramid law. And so I can be very helpful. I will assemble all the information that I have from the very beginning, from the very first meeting, 10 meetings until now, and eight or nine meetings with the building department, and what happened, and what advice we got, and how come these builders got away with it.
Okay, so that'll be part of written submissions. So.
But we're holding the hearing.
Yes. Or if he wants to write something up for us, he can do it. All right, so what are we talking about?
Happy birthday.
What are we talking about in terms of timing here? Carl?
To gather all this, I mean, you're going into September?
We're going into October.
Probably October.
10/2.
All right, so we're going to adjourn.
10/2, Bob.
Yep.
All right, so Robert is not here, so I'm going to, wait, wait, we have to vote. I'm going to, I'm going to make the motion that we hold this hearing open until October 2nd.
2nd.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, thank you, Carl. Okay, so next on the agenda is a secret resolution, and let me read that.
No, no, go. I'm going to call you. You're going to come see me. I'll buy you lunch. Oh, number 20 on the agenda, secret resolution in the application of Watermill Building Supply Realty LLC, 1110 Montauk Highway, Watermill Suffolk County Tax Map, number 900-102-1-17.1.
Okay, I have the resolution. It's a secret resolution in connection with the application of Watermill Building Supply Realty LLC. Whereas the Zoning Board of Appeals has received a request and submitted variances in connection with the application of Watermill Building Supply Realty LLC for property located at 1110 Montauk Highway, Watermill Suffolk County Tax Map 900-102-1-17.1. And whereas after review of the documents submitted, the Zoning Board of Appeals found that this project is a type 1 action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, and coordinated review with the following agencies, Southampton Town Planning Board, Suffolk County Department of Health Services, and New York State Department of Transportation. And whereas Southampton Town Planning Board by resolution adopted June 26, 2025, and updated on June 2, 2025, indicated that they would like to assume lead agency in status in connection with the secret review of this project. Now therefore, be it resolved, Southampton Town, ZBA hereby agrees that the Southampton Town Planning Board should assume lead agency status with regards to the application of the Watermill Building Supply Realty LLC pursuant to six New York State CRR Section 617.6B. And further, be it resolved, that this board directs that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Southampton Town Planning Board, Suffolk County Department of Health Services, and the New York State Department of Transportation. I, so I'm moving that. Is there a second?
2nd. 2nd.
Okay. Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Ms. Revan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, now, we have two, we have two decisions, right? We have two decisions, right? Helen has a decision. Who would like? Julie, why don't you read Helen's decision?
Stephen and Mary Jane Seedorf, Suffolk County Town Map 900-228-3-31. This application is for property located at 81 Fanning Avenue, Hampton Bay. Applicants seek variances in connection with a one-story addition and front-covered porch on a non-conforming lot. This board finds that the application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. One, for a proposed front-covered porch, Town Code 330-6, general regulations that references Section 330-11, Residence District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback of 39.5 feet, where 40 feet is required. And two, for a proposed one-story addition, Town Code Section 330-115C, continuous, for a principal rear yard setback of 20.4 feet, where 34.5 feet is permitted. And three, relief from Town Code Section 330-11, for a total lot coverage of 22%, where a maximum of 20% is permitted, as shown on the survey prepared by Jason Leadingham, LS, last revised May 15, 2025, and the floor plans and elevations prepared by Philip E. Kemp, RA, dated August 4, 2023. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
2nd.
Ms. Kane.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Revan.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Kevin, you have.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to approve the following resolution regarding Robert W. and Eric S. Flag, Suffolk County Tax Map, number 900-144-1-97. This application is for property located at 38 Brookhaven Avenue, Flanders. Applicants request a determination for variances for a proposed two-car garage with accessory apartment above. After testimony at evidence was presented that the existing dwelling was built in 1969 and is smaller than that which is permitted today, this board finds that the applicant passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board finds that the proposed detached garage with accessory apartment above is a subordinate or incidental building pursuant to Town Code Section 330-5 definitions because of its size in proportion to the main dwelling, and grants relief from the following provisions of Town Code for an accessory apartment above a detached garage. One, Town Code Section 330-11.2G, special standards to allow the total floor area of the accessory apartment to be 96% of the total floor area of the principal building dwelling, I'm sorry, principal building where a maximum of 35% is permitted. Two, Town Code Section 330-11.2 for principal front yard setback of 25.5 feet, where 28 feet is required, 70% of the required, 40 feet. And three, Town Code Section 330-11.2J, to allow two driveways where only one access driveway is permitted. These variants are granted as shown on the survey prepared by John F. Berilsky, licensed surveyor, last revised April 22, 2024. Floor plans and elevations prepared by David J. Rose, registered architect, last dated March 13, 2024. Grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
2nd.
Mr. McDonald.